Meeting of the Grafton Planning Board, it is now seven o'clock. Pursuing to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, this meeting of the Grafton Planning Board is being conducted with both in person and remote participation by board members and members of the public. Remote participation by the public for the public comment agenda item, the public hearings, and any other matter for which the board allows public participation will be via the Zoom raised hand feature. If you raise your hand on Zoom, you will be enabled at an appropriate point to enter the meeting via voice or video to make a comment or ask a question. In all cases, whether in person or remote, please identify yourself by name and address for the record. Please note that this meeting is being recorded as well as being broadcast live on the Grafton Community Government Channel, and every vote tonight will be taken by roll call. I'm going to start us off with the roll call of the board, of those of us present, Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Hassenner.
I'm here.
Ms. Hassenner.
Here.
Mr. Van Katraman is currently absent. He does hope to attend at some point, but he's not, he could not promise that he would do so, and associate member Moore McCormack.
Present.
And of course, I am here as well. All right, that brings us to our first agenda item, public input, as always, if anyone has anything to bring to the board's attention or mention that is not otherwise on the agenda, now would be the time to do so, either be it in person hand or on Zoom.
No hands raised on Zoom?
I'm seeing none. That brings us to our action items. Mr. Hill, you can come on up, they're all three relating to you. And the first one is request for waiver of application fees for A and R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero six dots. For sixty-one Weston Street, Willard House Clock Museum, and we can probably discuss sixty-two as well if the board wants, which is, you know, also a request for waiver as their second action item for the A and R fees.
Yes, should I?
Yeah.
Yes, good evening. My name's Norman Hill. I'm president of Land Planning, where I civil engineering, land surveying, and environmental consulting firm. I am also a licensed civil engineer, licensed land surveyor. I have many years of experience, I won't tell you how many, but many. So, the last meeting, I was online, you couldn't hear me. I, I, I tried, I couldn't get you to hear me, but I heard the meeting, I heard what was said. And the plan in front of you tonight proposes one lot, and at the last meeting, you had technical issues. You couldn't see the plan. And you only had three weeks on which to act, so you had, I guess you had to deny it because you couldn't see it. I'm at home going, oh my God, they can't see the plan. So, and then the second plan, I had submitted a common driveway application for a special permit, and I had also submitted the A and R plan for three, for two new lots, which would have created the third remaining lot. But you didn't have the special permit application in front of you, even though I had submitted them together with my cover letter. Have you seen my cover letter? I submitted them both together, paid the fees together, wanted them to be presented together, but I guess there was a glitch and they weren't presented together, and, and in your regulations, it says many times, a lot must be accessed through its frontage unless there's, it's being accessed by a common driver, or except when it's being accessed by a common driver. Without that common driveway application in front of you, you had, you had to deny the plan. I totally understand what happened, made me crazy, but it happened. So, my client is the Willard House. They're a not-for-profit organization. They're doing their best to preserve America's history. I'm sure you're all familiar with Willard Clock. They own all of the land on which these two plans were, were trying to create lots on. And the reason they asked us to create these lots is they're trying to build an endowment to keep this organization going forward. So these lots, as you know, are going to be worth over a hundred fifty thousand dollars each, so four lots, that's six hundred thousand dollars could go right in their endowment and enable this organization to go forward for many years. Mr. Willard started building clocks there in seventeen sixty-six, seventeen sixty-six, before the revolution, before America. His three brothers kept it going, and it went for three generations. They made clocks, sold them all over America. It's really part of our history. It's something we want to, want to try to preserve, so I'm proud to represent them. So I'm asking tonight that the board waive the reapplication fees. I have reapplied for the single lot, and in a couple of weeks, I'll reapply for the double lot plan. The reason I'm not applying for that right yet is I have to do the stormwater management design. I've talked to Leah at Conservation, and she said, I want you to design both septic systems, the sewer connection, and then present that with a common driveway, but now she wants to do stormwater management for all three houses in the common driveway, which your bylaw requires, and we're going to do that, but I'm going to need a couple, another couple of weeks to complete that work. So tonight, we're asking you to waive the reapplication fees for both A and Rs, and we're asking you to approve the single lot A and R.
Is there any additional color you want to add to?
No, I, I think that Norman did a good job explaining, given the, the technical issues that we experienced last time and apparent not being able to, to hear Norman, I think, you know, to hear him out now and vote accordingly, and he's really covered all the bases.
So, is for the moment focusing on the request for the waiver on these lots, is board of any questions or comments regarding that?
I think under the circumstances, I have no problem waiving the fees in this, given the particular circumstances of this case.
Yeah, we want to be sure we understand, you know, have a record of why we waive fees, so that everybody isn't, uh, at the same thing.
Makes absolute sense to me. Do I have a motion?
I'd move that we waive them.
Second. I have a motion and a second to waive the fees for both sixty-one Weston and the reapplication for sixty-two Weston Street. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenner.
Aye.
Ms. Hassenner.
Aye.
Mr. Van Katraman is not here, and I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
We will waive both fees. Now focusing now on the A and R for sixty-one Weston Street, the recent middle.
Yes, regarding this, this A and R plan, it shows not only the lot that we surveyed, but it shows all of the abutting land that the Willard House owns. If you remember being at the Willard House, there's a large field that goes up to the corner of Weston Street. That entire field is owned by the Willard House, both in front of them and behind them. This, this lot will be up Willard Street, around the corner, and then there's woodland, so you won't be able to see this house from the museum. This lot is around, around the corner and in the woods, so as you visit Willard House, you'll still see the beautiful open fields, and you won't see this, this house that will be built on this lot. The lot, lot has sufficient frontage and acreage, has sufficient upland, counting only twenty-five percent of the wetland area, it has plenty of upland.
Thank you.
So, this is entirely different than the plans we were looking at last time. Well, you didn't get to see this plan last time.
Nope, this is the one we weren't able to see.
Which confused me when I looked at it here, because I thought we were getting a newly drawn plan to fix issues with that other one. So this is an entirely different one. No, this plan has not changed. This plan has not changed.
Just that we didn't, we didn't get to see the one.
You didn't get to see it, yeah.
Last time.
There's technical issues with us seeing this plan, but it is dated January twenty-fourth, so it is the same plan.
So, there's a lot, I think the lot you're talking about is at the bend in the road.
Yes, yes, it's, it's around the corner.
Point at the bend in the road.
That's what we're pointing at on the screen.
Come, whoever's moving the arrow, come down where the bend in the road is, at the S, right there. Okay, now, all, all the way back into what's shown as wetlands, is this one lot? Yes, it's just one lot, and has adequate continuous upland area. Okay, and, um, does, uh, is, is the Z symbol that you're using, i- is that a standard? Yes, it designates, it indicates that that line is the, is the go-away. I, I understand that, but either, either it's a standard part of the vocabulary for the draw, for drawings of this type, or else there's an explanation of it on the sheet.
It is standard procedure by land surveyors to show a Z through lines that ought to be, be eliminated. That's to help the assessor to combine, to know to combine lots four and five with lot six? Because lots four and five have no frontage by the.
I often complain that I can't tell what's going on in these drawings, because there are lines coming and going that you can't tell about.
I know.
First time I've ever seen someone do the Z, so that's, that's excellent, and will require that going forward. I get it. Okay, uh, if I'm not getting in anybody's way, I'll move that we find that this plan does not require approval and designate the planner to sign it.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to find that approval is not required. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenner.
Aye.
Ms. Hassenner.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Declare the motion carried by four and one absent.
A sincere thank you to the board and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for consideration for that. Everyone stay well.
Thanks for coming in and getting things cleared up for us finally, and we'll, at the next meeting, we'll be looking at the other A and R.
Yeah, I, I think we will.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, take as much time as you need for that. We're not going to rush you into it, at least I'm not.
I think we're going to want to have voted on the special permit before we act on the, that, the A and Rs, so we may want to somehow prepare to be able to do that as, as easily as possible. We could. I'd still like to spend them both together, but, oh, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Maybe I should just submit the special permit when that's ready, and then bring the A and R in a couple of weeks later. I, I'm willing to do that. It doesn't, it doesn't even, they might be able to put together a decision for us to work on.
Yep, for, for reference, there was a very similar A and R situation on Upton Street back in the nineties, where we had three lots, two of which had wetlands in the front, and they were approved as an A and R, subject to a common driveway being provided.
And that was before you changed the bylaws to make the exceptions for a common driveway.
Do you have a point?
I, I do. So after the last meeting where we weren't sure whether or not there was, there was viable access.
Yes.
We did, Fiona did ask town council, and she, there is viable access, it would have to be approved by CONCOM, and would have to be proposed to be approved by CONCOM, but that is not a reason necessarily, that, that would not have been a reason to reject this as an A and R. No one, of course, wants to build it that way, because it would cost a lot of money, and CONCOM would prefer you not go straight through the wetlands, but we did ask town council, and she said that that access issue was not a reason to deny it. The board can still decide what they want to do, but that, we did do that research afterwards.
Yes, I, I, I looked up some similar information, and, you know, there, there's some interesting case law on the topic.
Right.
Yes.
But bottom line is, yeah, the, the case law, I think, supports the approval of an A and R under those circumstances, and as I said, we did so in nineteen ninety-three, a very, very similar situation, approved an A and R.
Yeah.
I don't even think you have to say "subject to" the common driveway, but you might want to. It's up to, it's up to the board.
But Bob makes a good point, because if the common driveway doesn't get approved that night, maybe, maybe Graves has to look at it again, maybe we need to ask for continuance. The A and R three-week thing will, will expire, so I think I'll hold off on submitting the A and R until that common driveway is approved.
Yes, I think that, that, that would, that would certainly make the process a little bit clearer.
Yeah, for the, for the potential snag, okay.
Yes, I think, I think we could approve it as an A and R without the common driveway, but having the common driveway already approved would eliminate some possible questions about the A and R.
I understand. All right.
All right.
As long as it's not really delaying something that needs to move immediately.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's better to be cautious, careful.
That is the last of our action items, and we still have fifteen minutes, so bills.
Move we approve the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenner.
Aye.
Ms. Hassenner.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Declare motion carried. We will pay our bills. Staff report.
So, just a couple of updates for the board. Our master plan tour was conducted last week, and we're also starting our stakeholder interview processes. Our survey is underway. We have eighty-six responses thus far. The, we're looking to expand our outreach for that, because we're getting, we're noticing a lot of similar demographic respondents, so we're looking to push that out as much as possible. I'm working with Grafton Cable TV to get that out more, and just increasing exposure in general, but also working with the Town Administrator's Office to compile a working group. I put out a call for volunteers. I did get one response thus far, still continue to work on that, so that is our master plan update. I'm working on tracking list for subdivisions in town to try and nail down, with Natalia, kind of more current status. It's really more of a good administrative thing for, for me, being new. So that's something that I'm piloting right now. I did try and apply for CPA funds for Institute Woods Trail, which did not work out, however, we are going to move forward with our Mass Trails grant that we applied for, so we'll keep you posted about that. We are working on a grant application, under, underutilized property program grant through Mass Development for one Hawthorne Street in Bullock Plaza, so that's underway. We met with Mass Development and the property owner, so we're excited about that. We have our Five Mill Street Park community meeting coming up on April twelfth, so hopefully we'll get a good attendance there. We've sent out mailers to a butters, we've also put information in utility bills, and have been posting on social media and circulating as much as we can. We did receive DLTA funding for our priority parcel list action item for our open space and recreation plan, and I'm coordinating with CMR PC to kick off that project. I am working with DPW and the TA's office on George, the George Hill Road project. So we have our kickoff meeting soon. I know there's going to be a community meeting tomorrow evening as well, so that's going to be hosted by the Select Board and Evan's office. So we'll continue to collaborate, and as things unfold with that project, I'll continue to keep the board in the loop. We're working on spending down our ARPA funds for economic development, so we have been kind of focusing on business recruitment there, and I'm working closely with John Allen, the Economic Development Coordinator, to get that money spent down. That is the real short version. There is a lot, we're also continuing to work on our MS four compliance, as well as our, I received a first draft of our housing production plan today, which I will be reading and providing common and working with the Affordable Housing Trust on, and I will continue to share updates with the board in that regard as well. And if I'm forgetting something, then I apologize, but that is the, that's the short list anyway. In addition to applications and providing technical assistance, as we always do, so.
All right. Correspondence. Does anybody on the board want to talk about anything in the correspondence?
Nothing, nothing noteworthy caught my eye, other than some things I already knew about, and one of the correspondence items is from me.
Yeah, the, the MBTA thing has been in the, in the big news.
It's been in the news.
Yeah, well, getting actual prominent attention. Should be interesting to see how that works out. I know some of those people, at least one up at CMR PC, and get the impression that they have strong ideas about the subject. As long as they have an unlimited legal budget, I think they can do whatever they want.
So reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CMR PC. I'll just say CPC met last week. We did vote to put forward two projects to town meeting. One of, there was a third project that Fiona just mentioned that was regarding some further work on the design for trails near Institute Woods. That was not put forward by the CPC, but we did put forward an accessibility improvement for Norcar, Norcross Park, as well as some housing assist, rental assistance for the, um, Grafton Housing Authority for, to have, let the Housing Authority provide some housing, you know, rental assistance for people who may need it in that regard. Those will be up for town meeting vote. Anyone else want to mention anything about, uh, town committee or CMR PC?
Yep, this isn't exactly a planning board representative on another town committee, but it's, I wanted to mention that I did attend the Citizens Planner Training Collaborative Annual Meeting last weekend up at Holy Cross. I had actually not, for all the time I've been on the board, I've not gone to any of those before, but it was very interesting. Perhaps not surprisingly, one of the main, major topics of informal conversation that I had with various people there was the MBTA zoning. That's a kind of a hot topic. These sessions that I attended, some of them were kind of interesting. I had attended one on the idea of developing a housing project that consists of one hundred percent affordable units, which is something I really hadn't thought would ever be practical, but there's, there's three guys there, three firms that have been quite successful at developing a hundred percent affordable projects, which I thought was interesting, that they can actually make that economically viable. As part of that, they described a, a zoning that Cambridge has, which it's, it's an overlay zone that provides some special, you know, regulatory incentives for doing projects that are one hundred percent affordable. I have no idea, I really didn't look into the, a lot of the details of that. I don't know whether that's an idea that we would ever consider bringing into Grafton, but it was kind of interesting that, you know, it actually, there are ways to develop projects that consist of a hundred percent affordable housing.
But was that all the, just the forty B level of affordability?
It's, I think it's in the sense of being targeted towards households with incomes at, at or below eighty percent AMI. That's, you know, that's the sort of standard forty B threshold, and I think that's kind of where they were at. So that was, that was one interesting thing. We had another session on, on writing zoning bylaws, where we spent most of the time talking about the procedural aspects and some of the funny things that can be encountered there, and then the other session was on, it was entitled "Rethinking the Retail Strip", which was looking at options for redeveloping or revitalizing some of these retail strips that in some places have become completely abandoned because of people going out of business due to COVID. And largely, the, the rethinking or redeveloping of the retail strip was focused on mixed use, which is something, you know, we have some mixed use zoning in Grafton. We really haven't taken advantage of it yet. No one's taken advantage of it to redevelop some of these older, you know, you know, less, less than fully used strips, but it's an interesting idea. So that's basically what I got out of it. It was very, and Fiona was there. And I don't, I, I don't think we had talked about it here on the planning board in advance and encouraged people to go, but it's well worth your while if you have never been.
That's all I have.
And I'm not hearing anything more from Bob.
What was it? Did we get a mention yet of physical development? CMR PC, physical development, approving the, the other project that you put in, Fiona? I'm not sure whether I got, got that, but we did.
Yes, we are, we are approved, and I've touched base with Trish at CMR PC to take the next steps for that project. And it will say, while we're waiting for seven thirty, that we will be having an MBTA communities discussion with CMR PC to build out the analysis further. And I know that Dave, you've done a lot of great work in that regard, so that meeting will be forthcoming, and we'll be discussing that at the next planning board meeting. So just, we're continuing to analyze our zoning in the compliance module and hitting our targets in that regard, which will be eventual town meeting, bringing that to town meeting.
So at, at some near future meeting of this planning board, we'll, we'll be wanting to discuss some of the various options that we have to look at.
Yes.
For MBTA compliance, there's a couple, three different directions we might go, but there's definitely some things that we are going to need to discuss on the board to decide, you know, what we want to continue looking at. Since that's not on the agenda tonight, I won't, I won't go into any more detail.
Right.
I have something to add. We're trying to kill time. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be working here. This is probably going to be the last planning board meeting that I'll be attending. I will still be available to Fiona, should she have any questions. But I think she's good to go, but I've really enjoyed it here. Grafton's doing a lot of great things, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your assistance here.
I leave you in good hands.
You should, you should have gathered up lots of crazy stories to tell other people about what that board does.
I, I keep a running list of all the communities I've been in. Everyone thinks they're the craziest, and then they hear what I've learned in other places. Someday I'm going to write a book.
We'll have to work harder, I guess.
Yeah. You'd be surprised.
Actually, we'll do one more update. If feedback for the Complete Streets prioritization plan, I know that that was presented at the last meeting. We are extending, the deadline has been extended for that, so we do have some additional time, and I am working with CMR PC as well as the Town Administrator's Office to get any final thoughts in before that final submission, and so that's on the board's radar as well.
And I guess since we do have still a few more minutes left, just for the public's, you know, knowledge, we do, there is going to be hosted by the Select Board tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the Grafton Public Library in meeting rooms A and B, a public outreach regarding improvements for George Hill Road, including plans and potential funding options. So that's taking place tomorrow, and then I know last week there was a item on the agenda for the Lip Project at fifty-nine Pleasant Street for the, for units that are expected to be built there. That got postponed from last, from this past Thursday. It is going to be held on Wednesday. If you look at this, right?
Yes, yeah. The library.
Yeah, at the library as well, so that will be at seven o'clock PM.
Just if I may, if any board members are interested in attending either of those meetings, just let me know in case we need to do posting.
You, you can count on Linda and I being interested.
And David likely to be interested.
I know three planning board members I expect to be at the George Hill meeting tomorrow night.
It might tend to be like.
David, Olivia's will be there also.
Still brought it up anyway. I, I would, Katie might have opinions, but.
Okay, I'll follow you.
But like the Pleasant Street case, I hope they don't run out of space the way this is going. It's been getting a fair amount of information handed out. They're, they're talking about a really expensive project that's going to be.
Yes.
Funding is going to be interesting, so to speak. By the way, Dave, I, have you heard anything about opening of Stowe Road while we're talking about this area?
I was just about to mention that Stowe Road opened up today.
It did?
It did, because I was down. It did, cuz I was down there and it wasn't open yet, but it was paved. Um you know, and looking ready.
And did they take away the stop signs?
The stop signs are still there, but they 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 took away the roadblocks, it was around three o'clock this afternoon, I drove through there.
Okay, cuz that's about their quitting time, um but yeah, I saw the stop sign there, I didn't. I wonder if they put it back in, I'm not sure it's needed anymore.
I'm quite sure it's not needed, they just haven't removed it yet. At least I hope the guy, I can't see, there's no plausible reason to have a stop sign there.
Yeah, well, they need, they need the center line painted, you know.
All right, I I'm I'm gonna rein you in now that it's seven thirty.
It is now seven thirty.
So that brings us to our public hearings, the. If anyone is here for the Willard House Clock Museum, if you might have heard beginning of the meeting, that is going to be continued until. April twenty fourth for for that public hearing, we'll, we'll vote on that as a board when it comes down to it on our agenda. And then our first public hearing is. A request for modification of definitive plan DP twenty sixteen dash zero one dot five Village at Institute Road. Would you like to read the notice?
The Grafton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, commencing at seven thirty PM. In Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. To consider an application to modify a definitive plan approval. Requesting approval of a two-year extension of the construction completion deadline set to expire on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Of the Village at Institute Road, Woodland Hill subdivision, a forty-six lot residential subdivision. On property located southerly of Westboro Road and westerly of Institute Road and shown on Grafton Assessors Map twenty-two Lot twelve. Said property is located in a medium density residential R twenty and office light industrial O L I district. The applicant owner is Pulte Homes of New England. A copy of the application materials is available for public inspection. At the Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website. At WWW dot Grafton dash I A dot gov on the Planning Department slash Development Projects webpage.
Alright, I can let you take it away or I can summarize, you can go from there, I'm open to both.
It's up to you, I mean, I can uh kick it off, and if there's any questions, again, Essex Petrie with Pulte Homes. Uh also joining me from CDG Engineering, Matt Leidner uh on the line, uh he's a project engineer. Uh we were here almost uh you know, fifty or forty-eight weeks ago or so, uh and we're granted an extension, and so we're here. Tonight to request a two-year extension for the project, uh if you've been down Institute Road anytime recently, um you'll, you know, the project is. Is moving along, there's a lot of work going on, it's not the the prettiest time of construction, but it's, it's active and it's progressive, and we've been advancing at a good clip.
Anything you wanna add Fiona, just to make sure I call it out?
No, you know, not, um I don't really have anything significant to add, Essex and I have been working very closely on this project, um. Pulte has been doing um their due diligence um in the follow-up that as needed, I don't have anything to add really.
I think for me, I think this is pretty straightforward, I've seen the progress, it's. It's not slowed, it's only, you know, progressed at a better pace than it had been for the past, what, ten years? Bob, go ahead.
Don't we uh usually grant one-year extensions?
That has been our practice in general, I will say, I think with knowing the scope that they have in that. Development, it's extremely unlikely to have, you know, anything solved in a year, but.
The the point, at least in the past, has been to allow us to. Keep up with what's going on and if there are any issues, have a opportunity for interaction. Give the public a chance to. Say something if they need to.
Do you wanna respond to that?
Um I I I don't, uh you know, that's a. Up to the board, obviously, to make the determination, our request is for the two years, um I understand, uh you know, the the desire to. For check-ins, we do um frequent uh check-ins through the inspection reports with Graves Engineering. Uh there's, there's frequent communication, um you know, we're on site often. And you know, we're certainly not going, and we're certainly open to coordination, and and I feel that. Our communication has been fluid and open throughout, um so I don't know that we've given any reason to suggest otherwise.
Sometimes things change though.
I was only gonna say that maybe the board could give the two-year uh extension, but as a condition, say they have to come back to the board in a year. To have a conversation about it, but. Because, because then otherwise you have to uh do the public hearing, you have to advertise again, kinda like we did with Morgan Drive. With the geese, where we wanted to hear what was going on. That's just a suggestion, but the board can do what they would like to do.
Yeah, just the one other data point in that the current subdivision rules and regulations. Uh allow us to give an extension for up to three years.
So I certainly wouldn't be opposed to coming back for a um, you know, as Eve's suggestion. Um setting a date to come back and uh offer an opportunity to have a conversation, but um to, you know. Minimize that, uh the application process and whatnot, um you know, it would certainly, uh we'd be okay with that. And I could work with Fiona to kind of set that date in the future, but um we'd be willing to come back and have that conversation.
I, at least for me, on the personal level, I lean toward approving the two years, I think having the conversation is definitely worth doing, so probably. You know, just put on paper, like, one year from the decision, you should have, you know, meeting with the planning board to, you know, give us an update, kind of a.
Yeah, that would, that would work for me. Two years without checking out one year.
Great, that would work for for me, for us as well.
Any further comments, questions from the board, or in this case, anyone from the public? Not seeing any, my, only a, this may not need it, but my suggestion might be to. For the board to have staff draft the decision as, and keep the hearing open with you requesting continuance to our next meeting. Primarily because we do have one member who's not here right now, and at least that would give them the opportunity to mull it in and. You know, vote on the decision. It may not be necessary for this one, but it's.
Yeah, no, Natalia gave me that that heads up earlier today that that was um could be.
And, you know, keeping the hearing open doesn't, doesn't introduce any additional delays, assuming that a draft decision is available at the next meeting.
Unless you wanna actually make a motion and approve it. And let the decision be written.
My only concern.
Sometimes that sort of thing happens, not with us.
We have about a mu- uh little over a month before, um you know, actually, I think we have, yeah, we have over a month before. Um we get um too close to our expiration date, so um if if it's, we're talking about continuance for two weeks till the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and I think in this case, the 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 shape of the decision is quite clear from the discussion.
One point. I will not be at the next meeting.
So that puts us in the same spot then?
Yes.
There's nothing I can do about that.
You're muted, Natalia.
Think we should just vote on it tonight.
Okay, we could, we could do that.
And I apologize, I don't fully follow, what does that mean, if it's voted on tonight and then?
We could, we'd be able to vote on approving the extension tonight with the. As we discussed, and we'd vote on the final language of the decision at our next meeting, so.
Okay, so.
Practice, you still have a decision by next meeting, but you would know tonight that, you know, we would, we're moving forward.
Gotcha, so that means that um board member Linda Hassenger's vote gets logged in tonight?
Yes, and we don't have to worry about it, we don't have to worry about continuing the hearing then.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, uh otherwise, you might end up with only three of us. Able to vote next time, and I might wanna vote present, well, I guess that's still. No, that's still um, that only requires a majority of a quorum, right?
This is just a more, this is just a majority vote.
Okay, so it it's. Either way.
Natalia's hand is going up and down.
Yeah.
Let's get it voted.
I think I heard a motion.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the extension with the conditions as mentioned and have staff drafted, drafted decision of the. Reflecting our decision tonight for our next meeting.
And I think the motion also included closing the hearing.
Yes.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the complicated motion?
We made, I think we made it more complicated than it needed to be.
Yes, we did, hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Hi.
Mr. Hassenger.
Present.
No, did he ask me? Oh, uh aye.
And I vote aye, adequate emotion carried unanimously, not unanimously, because it was carried three in favor, one present, one absent.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that.
So that brings us to.
Next, stay right here, yeah.
Same, same person, different project.
Which, I thought you read the 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 notice on this.
Yes, so the Grafton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, commencing at seven thirty PM in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial. Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road to consider an application for modification of a special permit and site plan approval. For a mixed-use development of Fonso Village to modify the connection with the adjacent subdivision. By removing the vehicular connection and shifting the alignment of the pedestrian connection. On property located at one hundred Westboro Road and shown as Grafton Assessors Map twelve Lot twenty-two. Said property is located in the medium desert density residential R twenty and village mixed-use transit village VMUTV zoning districts. The applicant owner is Pulte Homes of New England LLC. A copy of the application and plan is available for public inspection. At the Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at WWW dot Grafton dash I A dot gov. On the Planning Department slash Development Projects webpage.
Alright, I'll have you kick it off, I'll, I'll ask in your present, presentation that you summarize what. The conversation between the fire and, you know, as well as.
Absolutely, yeah, so again, I'm still Essex Petrie with Pulte Homes, uh and Matt is still, uh Matt Leidner from CDG LLC is. Uh has uh has joined us as well, um so for those that weren't here at the previous planning board meeting, we presented this. Um uh change, uh modification that impacts both or it affects both uh Winslow Point as well as Woodland Hill. Um we had previously presented an option where there was a vehicular connection as well as a pedestrian connection between the two projects. After conversations with staff and Fiona and Mr. Berger, we determined that that was not going to be feasible. So we removed that vehicular connection and um have just are moving forward with a pedestrian connection. Uh at the Woodland Hill modification meeting, we presented the uh lot line modification changes as it affects the Woodland Hill project. It was primarily a paper change for, for, you know, legal change from a lot line perspective. Tonight, we're presenting at the, as the Winslow Point changes, as they are the more engineering and physical site changes. Uh that are gonna be represented in the field, uh so what it does mean is, is was shown in the plans that were sent, the. Uh we've kind of just taken that connection out uh from a vehicular perspective. Uh adjusted the, the roadway alignment for the internal Winslow Lane roadway. Uh shifted the sidewalk over slightly to connect, directly connect the two projects. And I guess there was some other uh stormwater infrastructure uh changes associated with it, as uh we had to remove a couple catchbasins. Um and a uh uh line connecting to a Superman Hall as a result of reducing the pavement. Relative to the fire department conversation, we did um meet with um. Fire prevention officer Mike Colleen, uh Fiona joined us as well, uh fire department presented um a. Um a question regarding the emergency access, particularly related to um. Once the first building off of Institute Road is constructed, if there's concerns there. Um while the second building is being constructed or when it's constructed, if there's a obstruction to um the roadway. Pulte Homes has um in emergency access easement through to Westboro Road. Uh to allow us to satisfy that concern in that we will be able to provide emergency access through there at that time. Um when it's appropriate, and we worked through with uh the the chief and Mike Clean as far as when that uh. When that timing would be appropriate to provide that access, uh thank you, yeah, when building two is is completed and building one is. It, when we're, when we're looking for a permit for uh for building one. Additionally, one uh addition to the emergency access, we talked about just um signage uh to. Give proper information to nine-one-one and emergency services, we will have temporary signage on Westboro Road. Identifying the the Winslow Lane moniker, kinda with an arrow pointing down. Um and then for temporary during construction, we'll have a sign that identifies emergency access only. And actually, great timing this afternoon, we also received the peer review letter from Jeff Walsh at Graves. Uh and uh he um did not have any comments relative to it, recognizing that the changes were um really minor. Uh and or de minimis impact as it relates to the stormwater management system. And we also did meet with CONCOM last week uh on both Woodland Hill and Winslow Point and uh received approval. From CONCOM on the adjustments from, from their perspective. And just a project update, we also did do our erosion control inspection walkthrough with Fiona and Leah. Last Monday, I think it was last Monday, um and that went well as well.
Anything to add?
No, that covered, that really covered it, Essex doesn't really cover, summarizing everything. Um again, you know, Essex and his team have been in regular communication with us, um following up, I mean, the, in terms of satisfying the conditions. They've, they've done a wonderful job, I mean, we've been regularly corresponding and they're, they're up to speed, so. No concerns on my behalf.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the emergency access is this basically through here?
Yes, yep, yeah, so Pulte Homes has a twenty-four foot easement that um follows along essentially the curb to curb. Um therefore, uh in perpetuity, um so starting currently through in perpetuity.
Yep, so fire is satisfied, Jeff Walsh is satisfied, CONCOM seems to be satisfied.
One left.
Yeah, I I don't see anything that's left hanging here at this point, nothing, nothing at this point remains to be resolved.
Do we have any? Questions or comments from the board? I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you, Linda?
It's pretty straightforward.
Questions or comments from members of the public? And I'm seeing none, so.
Maybe a motion would be in order to uh close the public hearing and direct after draft decision.
My. Motion in a second, this discussion, I'll. Just briefly mentioned, do we want to do it this way with this one where we do know Linda will not be at our next meeting? So how do we want to play this out, so we can close it now, then we don't have Prabu's. I would have to mull it in if we left it open, if we decided a decision at our next meeting, we don't have. Linda to decide on it, you, I could invoke, I can invoke more.
Yeah.
And then. You, like, what does the board wanna do regarding this, cuz we would wanna keep it.
Let's get it done.
Yeah, I think it works if we close the hearing, I mean, as as it is, we have, if Linda's not at the next meeting, we do have. Uh three of us plus the associate, we have, we have four.
Okay.
And if Prabu reviews this and on a mullen, then that works too.
Don't, don't we need the hearing technically open to be able to take the submission of the mullen?
That's a legal question that I don't have the answer to.
I, I thought we did, but I, I could be wrong.
Alright, but let, let's go the way you're going. Vote next time, it is a special permit. Remove the question.
Alright, so. So the, the idea is to keep the, technically to keep the hearing open. So the, the idea is to keep the, technically to keep the hearing open so that we can receive additional exhibits, namely the mullen certification?
That's what I'm leaning towards. Italia, go ahead.
So then you need a different motion.
Yes, I would withdraw that motion if that's the direction we're gonna go.
Natalia.
Uh, can we then ask, uh, uh, staff to prepare a decision based on all that has transpired here?
Yes, and to keep the hearing open, the applicant would want to request a continuance.
And so, so just to understand, if Linda's not going to be at the next meeting, how does that?
So we will have basically two options to, you know, do this now. And in the end, leave it up to you, how you want to do that is we can leave the hearing open till our next meeting. Linda won't be here. I can invoke the associate member for the special permit. So we'll have five if Prabu.
Cause Prabu mullen's in, okay.
Otherwise, we could do one extra meeting. We have Linda and we can have the mullen and, you know, it's just longer.
My preference would be for option A. Now I understood it. I can understand it more completely. Thank you. Um, so yeah, so, um, I request, uh, continuance, um, for till the next meeting.
April tenth.
April tenth.
Yep.
So we have the applicant's request for continuance, which will be in writing.
Is, is there a motion open at the moment? I want to make a motion.
There's no motion.
No, I withdrew the motion to close the hearing. So now the motion.
To grant the applicants to be written request to continue the hearing until our next meeting on April tenth at seven thirty.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to continue, to approve the continu- continuation of the hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mister Robbins.
Aye.
Mister Hassinger.
Aye.
Miss Hassinger.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare motion carried unanimously of those present.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Fiona, we'll just, obviously, the plans that we'll hold on to, that's another one thing that we were waiting on for today.
Right.
Was to get you that plan set, so we'll just put that out for a couple of weeks.
Perfect. Thanks, Isaac.
Thank you.
Yeah, just had, yeah.
You want to have some memo?
All right, that brings us to our next public hearing, which is relating to one Grafton Common, is Sean Paget. Mister Robbins, wanna read the notice?
Pursuant to section one dot three dot three of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaw, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, commencing at seven thirty P M to consider an application for a site plan approval for a cafe with seating up to thirty-six people and no exterior changes to the building or facade on property located at one Grafton Common and shown as Grafton Assessors Map seventy-four lot seventy-two B. Said property is located in a neighborhood business zoning district. The applicant is Sean Paget and the owner is the Town of Grafton. A copy of the application materials is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at www dot grafton dash ma dot gov on the planning department slash development projects webpage.
All right. Mister Paget, wanna go ahead?
Sure. Uh, Sean Paget, fifty-seven Old Upton Road. I'm here on Zoom, but Steve Belfiore, who's the proposed proprietor should be. I don't see him, but I.
He's coming right up.
Um, so this is a site plan review to change the front, um, uh, Worcester Street corner unit from, uh, what's currently quite fetching Pet, Pet Bakery to I believe, Steve, it's uncommon cafe, um, ice cream and coffee bar. Um, in the original application that I sent to you, I actually asked for a waiver for the site plan, engineered site plan, but subsequently Katrina found, uh, the site plan four-one Grafton Common, so we, we, we don't need that waiver any longer. So the only waiver that we're asking for now is a parking waiver. Um, you know, for obvious reasons, the, the building is on a, uh, you know, a, a no setback lot. There's no parking on the lot itself and, and we've, um, you know, had to come before the board for special permits and site plan reviews because of that, uh, and I believe the town is about to start a process of potentially changing the bylaw to, to make it so this doesn't have to happen next time. Um, I, I think it's fairly straightforward and happy to answer any questions that you folks have.
Uh, I'll say it's definitely was very straightforward. You crossed all the Ts that I was looking to, to check off when I was reading the application package that I, that I saw here. So thank you for, for all that preliminary work. That was very helpful. And, you know, I, I will say the, the parking, you know, exemption that we're looking at is something that the planning board is putting forward for a town meeting that we will have a public hearing about before a town meeting, but that's not if, done yet.
Yet, but.
Yeah, and we dealt similarly, more or less, with the parking when Sean was in for the, uh, one Grafton, the, where the, um, the town.
Yes.
Um, and my thoughts are the same as they were then.
Does any board member have anything they want to ask or discuss on this beyond what's in the application package already?
I noticed that, uh, there's been a good bit of, well, by our usual standards, a good bit of comment uh, submitted. I think all of it uh, from various people was positive.
Yep.
Yep. Definitely saw that and that was.
Mostly all the retail businesses within the area.
Yeah, that, that was very good to see that, yeah, the support of the neighboring businesses. That was good. I will say, yeah, out loud, I still have concerns on the amount of parking that is around there. That, you know, that's just a concern that I have, but at the same time, I'm also in support of exempting that. So I, I can't have both ways. So, you know, I'm not gonna, you know, hold you back on that, you know, concern there, you know, that's, that's my feeling, but.
Yeah, we're all well aware of the parking situation around the common.
Yep.
And this doesn't change that, right?
And, uh, do we want the common to be vibrant, active area? There's, except for tearing, except for tearing down the old firehouse and building a garage, maybe. I don't know what we could do.
Yeah, there's, there's always so much that we can even contemplate there, but parking is an issue, but other than that, to the best of our ability, I think we are all interested in, in seeing the common continue to be and even get more, be more of a, a, a place for people to be.
Exactly.
So I guess having.
Is there anyone there to comment?
I saw Hank go on, come on up. Just join up the podium so if you want Zoom or, or at home can hear you. And please just state your name and address for the record.
My name's, excuse me, Wanda Redden at ten Worcester Street in Grafton. I live three doors away from the common. Uh, my main concern is safety, um, that intersection and where the building is gonna be for the ice cream is very, very treacherous. Um, the crosswalk, I was wondering if the town is gonna put in a, a light crosswalk for pedestrians there. Um, because if you walk across the, the common to that area, there is no light there for the pedestrian kids. Um, myself, we drive, walk by there every day and it's very, very busy. Um, I just hope nothing happens to a child. Um, a mother can just leave a, they all have ice cream. They're excited and right there. It's, it's a very treacherous, uh, crossing, very dangerous. Um, I just hope that they can do something there for the crosswalks. Never mind the parking. The parking is horrendous anyway. Uh, so that's my main concern is the safety for the kids. Um, you're saying there's gonna be thirty-six people or so in that area. There's no parking. There's no really heavy duty crosswalk there. I'm just concerned about the safety of the kids.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
I have a question for her. I have a question. Somebody changed.
I think Linda's computer is not muted.
What's that?
Linda's computer is not muted. That's the echo and then, but I think Bob has a question for you. You missed. I think that's what he's gonna ask.
You're, you're sitting on that. All right. Um, my question is, is this, are we talking? Well, doesn't matter really. Uh, there was an ice cream and whatnot place across Worcester Street. Um, for quite a while, and I'm not sure how this compares with or, or differs from, uh, that situation. It was, crosswalks are there, the traffic's there. Um, I think, I think in any case, putting in something is, um, the, the select board's, uh, decision, isn't it?
Um, in Westboro, I know in front of the library, they have the pedestrian lights that flash. Something like that would be necessary, I think, there just to protect everyone, uh, as you're crossing from the common and then you're gonna cross again on one forty. One forty is horrendous. There's tractor trailers. Uh, Amazon, uh, has a great facility of trucks coming down that hill every day, every day.
That, I would, I would submit that to the Traffic Safety Committee and the Selectment, Select Board.
Yep. I, I think the, you, it is definitely, you know, traffic and, you know, safety in that area is definitely a concern and that's something I, you know, I hold, but I think that's not something that, you know, Mister Paget or, you know, surprise would have the ability to enact in that area that have to go through, you know, select board or Traffic Safety Committee or, you know, both to, you know, make any sort of changes in that area for safety, unfortunately.
Yeah, but I suspect in terms of pedestrian traffic, this particular proposed use is not significantly different from other uses that are there now or have been there in the past. Uh, there was some years back, there was a so, somewhat similar cafe type operation there, specialties or something like that. So this is, you know, I, I think it's not, it, it doesn't, it's not likely to bring, uh, bring about an unusually large number of pedestrians that aren't already there. But yeah, the issue is the, it, there, there are issues and I think, I think the best bet is to, to, to deal with those is to, it's, it's a much larger issue than one particular business in one particular corner of one Grafton Common.
Right, but I just want you to be aware, it's very dangerous and the children, children with ice cream. So that's all.
Thank you.
Hope the town realizes it.
Any other comments, questions, concerns, public or otherwise?
I just have one question for Mister Belfiore. Are you planning on keeping that same, same hours, ten to nine?
Well, so the one thing that I'm trying to do is have a, have a year-round ice cream. Business. So it will change with the seasons. I mean, let's just say summertime, ten to nine. That's what I'm, that's what I'm shooting for.
Okay.
Um, so I don't plan on changing that unless those hours don't make up, you know, we're not gonna go after the morning coffee or anything like that.
Okay.
It's mostly the ice cream and then we'll turn it into a small cafe with some food and stuff like that.
Okay.
But it's very limited to what I can do because there's no kitchen, right? So it's more of like a food truck setup where you have a commissary. Fortunately, I do have something that I can make things at, at the, at the Grafton Grill.
Yeah.
So we would utilize that for some of the food.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say this from my standpoint, I don't have a, you know, I don't have a problem with your proposed, you know, hours, you know, for myself. I did see some of the, you know, major concerns.
Yeah, just worry about peak, um,
Yeah.
you know, demand at same hot, same time as yours.
I would say Friday and Saturday nights probably gonna, in the summer is gonna be the peak and I'll compete probably. I know what you're saying. It's Townhouse Tavern.
Right.
But it is different as far as I feel like, you, you know, it'll, it'll be a different, it's a different crowd, obviously, but
Yeah.
it, I think that I've seen met, I mean, I grew, I live on South Street, so I, I've seen many events and festivities throughout the last twenty, twenty years.
And I would say the, you know, clientele that would go, you know, to your business on a Friday, Saturday nights might also be, you know, kids or families that have an Apple Tree Arts event rather than going to the Townhouse Tavern. So it's a, you know, different, you know, thing, but they're already there.
Right.
Yeah, that's kind of my, you know, expectation, you know, and I could be wrong. So it's my, you know, I do think as a whole, you might have a hard time maintaining a, you, enough clients to keep ten to nine, you know, seven days a week, you know, but
Exactly. That's, that's, that's.
That's, that's not a.
A work as a, you know, figure that out as I go, but.
That's not for me to figure out.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I move to close the hearing and direct staff to draft a decision?
I'm going to pause you for one second for the same issues we mentioned in the last meeting, your last hearing. You know, how would, you know, you and Mister Paget like to, you know, proceed knowing that we're missing one member tonight? They would have to, you know, do such a mullen certificate to say they watched the meeting and, you know, paid attention to all the, you know, commentary for, in order for them to vote on it. If we keep the hearing open, they can produce that mullen and vote. But then at our next meeting, we're missing one of our members as well, so they wouldn't be able to vote because they're not here. So we can, you know.
Just keep in mind that we do not need four votes to approve this.
True.
It's a site plan review. It just takes a majority vote to approve it. So the, the issues of missing members are less important here.
But it's still one less than we would have otherwise. So it's, I'm, I'm happy to go with whatever.
I mean, for me, you know, time is, is, you know, cause the summer's coming, so I'm trying to get, I got a lot of build out on there and there's no, you know, there's no water in that unit. There's a lot of things that I have to do. So in order for that to happen, I'd rather do it tonight so that I can move forward.
So.
I mean, you, you know, in either case, the decision will not be voted on by the board until, you know, the next meeting.
But it wouldn't be rescheduled for another, so.
But there's no, there, there'd be no reason to push it off any further than that.
Although, yeah, what I would probably recommend the board to do and, you know, hearing that you wanted us to vote on by our next meeting is to keep the hearing open like we did, you know, the other one, but still have staff draft the decision.
Mm-hmm.
That way there we can receive that mullen certificate from our, you know, member that's currently absent.
Yep.
And we can vote on it as a board at our next meeting and close the hearing at our next meeting.
Okay.
You know, that won't change the timeline. That'll just makes, you know, so we have the, you know, one extra member instead of three.
Right. And then what, when is that meeting?
It, uh, April tenth.
Okay. So, okay.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that seems like the only thing I can do, so that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, my, cause my lease was, was supposed to start April first, so now I'm just gonna have to push that off, so. I mean, yeah. Cause if you say no, if, if something happens, then, then I have a lease that I can't do anything in.
Yeah, I, I understand that, like, uh,
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like the board has any.
I mean, why, so can I, I just don't understand. So why couldn't you make a decision? Cause the, there's no, so that person has to watch the video and then make a decision.
We also would have to have a decision drafted and written out that reflects, you know, the commentary we've had, you know, in a public hearing and then the board can make it a determination based on the draft, the actual written out decision.
Okay.
And that's what we would need to wait till our next meeting on, no matter, you know, how we proceed tonight.
Okay.
Right.
But, but it would, the, what you decide tonight is pretty much gonna happen or no? Is there a chance that it wouldn't?
I think there is no doubt at all.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
No doubt that it's gonna be approved.
Just procedurally.
Okay.
It's the way it works.
I, I, I sense there'll be at least three votes, um, in favor.
So I'm fine with that.
The board could also choose to move for an approval tonight if that, the board wants to do that.
I don't see why not.
Same way you did the first one.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
Well, you gotta close the hearing first.
Right.
Okay, how does the board want to proceed? I'll move forward however you want to do it.
You know, if, if we can move to close the hearing and approve a decision with the the words not actually in front of us. But, and.
Well, with, for, for the, for public hearing A, you closed the public hearing and, uh, uh, and approved it, approved it and then you're just gonna actually approve the decision separately. So you could do the same thing so that
That's what I was just.
Miss Hassinger could vote and then she just won't vote on the, on the
Okay.
decision.
So I heard Bob's motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second. Let's go forward. Go forward.
All right. Motion in second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mister Robbins.
Aye.
Mister Hassinger.
Aye.
Miss Hassinger.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare motion carried unanimously of those present. Now, do I have a further motion?
Let's move, let's move.
What would it say?
What? What did I hear Bob say?
What, what would it say? Um, because, uh, it, we don't have a written decision.
Can we say we will move to approve the, the site plan with all the usual conditions to be drafted and reviewed by the board or even reviewed? Yeah, that, that, that's the only difficulty is that we don't have a written decision in front of us.
You can, you can move to, uh, to approve the site plan approval and then when the, when the, when the draft decision is in front of you, you just vote to approve the decision. Vote to approve the decision.
I, I got language that might work.
That's the, that's my motion.
We need to also approve, vote to approve the waiver tonight.
Do what?
Yep.
The waiver.
Oh.
The parking waiver.
And that's in my motion.
Yep, I heard that.
So I have a motion?
Maybe someone wants to second my motion.
I would be delighted to second.
This week.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Hi.
Mr. Hassenger.
Hi.
Ms. Hassenger.
Hi.
And I vote aye, out of care the motion carried unanimously of those present. Will do the formal decision at our next meeting and then you can have the formal paperwork after that, but you know, we've, we voted to approve this already.
I appreciate that, thank you. We will just review and approve the paperwork.
Yes.
The paperwork that reflects the decision and the approval that we gave tonight.
Right, which is generally not the way the board has liked to do it in the past, but we've got some extenuating circumstances.
There's, there's a little bit of.
Right, I mean, under the circumstances here, the, there is really no controversy or question about.
Right.
What the written decision should say.
Right.
Yeah, and there's no waiting period like there is for a special permit, so he knows now and can. Start on what he needs to do.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Appreciate it, thanks for your flexibility.
And.
All right, next, public hearing is Willard Clock Museum. Have you read the public notice? I don't think so.
Nope, this is a brand new public hearing.
Okay.
It's continuing.
Yeah.
For which we have a continuance request.
Yes.
But we will open the public hearing and then grant the request to continue. So, to open the public hearing, pursuant to sections one point five point seven and one point three point three of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three commencing at seven thirty P M. To consider the application for a special permit site plan approval for a common driveway to serve two single-family homes to be located at. Sixty-two Weston Street, shown as draft in accessories map twenty-two lot twelve. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district. The applicant slash owner is the Willard House Clock Museum. A copy of the application slash plan is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website. At W W W dot grafton dash M A dot gov on the Planning Department slash Development Projects webpage.
All right, and this we do have a request to continue, do I have a motion to approve such?
I move to, uh, approve the applicant's written request, continue the hearing until.
Twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth.
The, uh, the, the which?
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth at seven thirty.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the applicant's written request to con- to approve the applicant's written request to continue. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Robbins.
Hi.
Mr. Hassenger.
Hi.
Ms. Hassenger.
Hi.
And I vote aye, out of care the motion carried unanimously of those present. All right, that brings us to our next public hearing, which is also a new one for.
No.
No, we continued this one.
It's new-ish because I had to re-advertise.
Right, it's a new-ish.
Re-read the new no- legal notice.
Alrighty. So, let's see. Do we have a new legal notice? No.
I thought there was.
Yes, originally.
The, the public hearing notice I have here on the website is for the twenty-seventh.
For the how many?
It was continued from the twenty-seventh. Natalia's got her hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Natalia.
We did not have to, we ended up not having to re-advertise because the original was fine.
Oh.
It was not, uh, it is still a contractor's yard and not, um, whatever it is that we thought it was originally.
Okay.
So you don't need to read the, uh, the legal ad again.
Okay, that, that clarifies it, so, do, we have the applicant here?
Yes.
Mike? Mike McCura?
Yes, Mike McCura.
Hey, Mike. Do you wanna kick us off on opening us up, Mike?
Yes, thank you all, um, my name is Michael McCura. I am, uh, president of McCura Excavating, and I am the owner of twenty-two. Eighteen and fourteen Donahue Lane. Uh, we currently operate at twenty-two Donahue Lane. In an existing structure, uh, it's located on the bottom left of the plan. Uh, it's approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. Um, we've been, uh, owners of the property for some years now. And over the course of, um, several years, we've acquired the adjacent parcels, um. So right now, what we are doing is we're proposing to, um, expand our contractor yard. Over the both parcels eighteen and twenty-two. Um, our engineer of record is, is Connor Stone Engineering, um, unfortunately, they had a conflict tonight. Um, so they provided these plans, which I'm trying to, uh, present on, uh, on their behalf. Um, so essentially what we have is, um, an existing predominantly wooded area. Um, that slopes up gradient toward Hollywood Drive. And what we're proposing is to, uh, utilize the existing structure. That is on the twenty-two Donahue Lane parcel as an accessory building, um, in its current state. We're proposing to construct a new facility predominantly on the. Eighteen Donahue parcel, which is roughly twelve thousand square feet. And in conjunction with that, there is an existing, um. Building roughly two thousand square feet on, yep, right where the cursor is, that would be proposed to be demolished and removed. Um, there's a, uh, basically a, a driveway that would enter the south. Portion of the site, um, we would be going up gradient and around the building would be. Uh, impervious asphalt and then the, the tan shaded area, um, would be a gravel, um. For, for predominantly storage, um, of, um, you know, just equipment and, and miscellaneous materials that we use for our. Our work, um, Connor Stone did do a stormwater analysis, um. Various other requirements, uh, as part of the, the submission. Um, we have submitted and gotten initial comments back from Graves Engineering. Um, Connor Stone is actively, um, addressing those items from Graves Engineering. On, I believe intends to, uh, respond back to the board, um, in the upcoming weeks. Um, as part of the, the remainder of the, the scope, we would profo- propose all the green space that you see. Um, we would wanna create an earthen berm on the northerly side of the plan abutting Hollywood Drive. We, we've made provisions for a screen, um, screened elevated berm, uh, with several landscape. Um, trees for, for privacy, um, based on the elevations that we're proposing, the, the. It, it theoretically, the top of the roof line would be around twenty-four feet. And it would be, um, below the top of the landscape berm, so, um. The residents of Hollywood Drive would, would most likely not, um, you know, have line of sight of the, the new structure. Um, and then to the bottom of the plan, we would maintain the existing right-of-way for Wyman Gordon. And we would restore, uh, along that perimeter of our property line that abuts wetlands, we would restore that to. Um, green space, um, and essentially restore the buffer that, um, was, you know, there before we moved in. Um, and then make it, um, you know, vegetative, uh, restore that buffer. Um, before we move on to any other plans, um, I don't know if you want me to continue presenting the other two plans or if you want to open up. For questions on each plan.
Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments right now? Bob, Bob, go ahead.
Um, I'm thinking that we saw somewhere along the line, I saw, maybe we saw. Something about whether contractor's yard was the right, uh, designation, the, the right use. In this case, um, am I just imagining that? Something from the, uh, the zoning officer, maybe?
I can answer, there was, um, i- initially looking at the application, we thought that this would qualify as a major industrial complex. But upon, um, confirmation with town council, um, we, it, it was gross floor area, so that actually didn't. Apply, um, but this, this use is, is for, it was and continues to be for a contractor's yard.
Anything further on this part of it from the board? I guess go ahead, further, Mr. McCura?
Okay, we could, um, go to the next sheet.
Usually I do have, you know, the applicant present their entire thing, then I do make sure we hear from the public, you know.
Okay, so this is the second portion, um, obviously the left side is the match line to the beginning of our, um, property. This is the, um, if you wanna zoom in a, a little bit onto the road, this is the. Existing condition of Donahue Lane and, um, Donahue Lane is a private way. Um, it, it's fell under that, I guess, uh, classification long before I've been there. Um, typically, we, um, are, are maintaining the road for my, uh, my adjacent residents. Um, wh- we're looking to do, and we've had previous discussions. Um, with, with the other departments, um, when we first, um, proposed on this project. Um, there's, there's a concern for a- addressing the road with, for Donahue Lane. And there is no current association per se, um, for all these residents. Um, it's kind of just flown under the radar for many years and, you know, in, in us being able to upgrade our. Contractor yard, obviously, both go hand in hand where we would want to make upgrades to Donahue Lane. Um, within, uh, reason and, you know, for now, we are proposing, um, a eight-inch. Ductile iron water line with, um, hydrants per the fire department regulations in town. And we would obviously offer all the residents a domestic water service. Um, stubbed to their property line per, um, your common subdivision, uh, rules. Um, the issue that we wanna discuss with the board is the pre-existing condition. Of the lot lines that were surveyed and, um, you know. What we can do to make sure that Donahue Lane is, um, brought up to, um. Brought up to a, a condition for life safety, um, specifically, um, you know, fire apparatus access. Um, we, we're completely aware that there are gonna have to be upgrades done to this lane. Uh, unfortunately, it seems like we're kind of in a tough, um. Constriction of where the existing property lines are and how much, um, maximize width of road we can provide. And, uh, there probably will be some subsequent conversations with all the residents. And myself on Donahue Lane, um, depending on what the outcome comes with this discussion on, on, on the hearing. Um, and, and if that's, you know, proposed easements, uh, or, or of that nature, but. Um, it is our intent to upgrade Donahue Lane for, for life safety. Um, we, we did not intend to upgrade the road, you know, with, with, um, drainage or anything of that, that nature. Um, currently, it's, it's a crowned surface, um, and it's been pre-existing like that for some time, so. Um, this is kind of the, been the, um, discussion point that, you know, was, is gonna hinge upon. Um, the project's being successful for us, so, um, we'd like to elaborate as, as part of the discussion on, on. The Donahue Lane portion as well and, and the, um, upgrades that, um, you know, we're going to make. And then would, would be acceptable to the board.
So, just to ask, you say, Donahue Lane is a private road, correct?
Yes.
And then, who currently owns the road itself as far as, you know, maintenance and, you know, that, that sort of thing today?
Um, so we, it, it's kind of like, uh, you know, the, the plowing is typically done, uh, by us. Um, there is another gentleman, um, to my, um, uh, I think it's, uh, twelve, twelve Donahue. Um, you know, he, he also plows as well, um, so as far as the snow, it, it's taken care of. The, the potholing maintenance, um, usually it's a spring, springtime annual thing by us.
Yeah, just, just to briefly clarify, like what I'm looking for, just like, who is, like, you know, in theory legally responsible for doing that maintenance? Like who, like, you, you plow it today, you know, that's, you know, that's fine, but who's responsible for, for having it, you know, plowed? Who's responsible for the maintenance of the road, you know, yes, p- you do it or others will do it, you know, that's, you know, fine, but it's a private road. Who, you know, who does have that, you know, ownership of the road?
We, we don't know. We don't know.
Would that be the, um, abutters to the center line?
Yep, so, yeah, that. Am I correct that that means any improvements or changes to the road, other than, you know, the town taking ownership of the road? Would have to be approved by the, the abutters themselves? Okay. Yeah, so, like, we could, you, from my understanding, just from what I just, you, had. In some of some staff is that, you know, the planning board can say, we need this road to be improved to be, to improve this project. But the planning board cannot impose a private road to be changed, you know, from my understanding, that we, you know, the abutters have to. Agree to do that, that's what I'm understanding. I, I'm not a lawyer, that could be, I could be wrong, but.
I don't know, under, the site plan is, is access adequate?
You, I, I think you can, the planning board could put a condition to ask the applicant to make an effort. To do X, Y, and Z, but if it's, you can't require it, it's same thing if, if, uh, the work. If, if you're doing an offsite improvement on a state road.
Yep.
You can, you can make them ask the state, but the state doesn't have to do it.
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I'm, you know, getting, like, we can't require it to be done, but we can say their current proposal will not work with this. You know, that's the, that's, that's the trick there.
Yep.
But, Bob, go ahead.
More than asking questions, what's the sewer situation there, particularly for the, for the residences?
That, that's a, that's a good question, everyone is on their private septic with the exception of, I believe, um, number two. Um, I, they purchased the property, I wanna say, within the last five years. And right before that transaction, they put a forced main, um, connection for just their house. Out to, uh, Route one twenty-two.
As there is sewer, of course, in one twenty-two.
Say that again, sir?
There, there is sewer in one twenty-two.
Yes.
Uh, I would, you know, I'd hope that it was positioned in a way that it would receive. Uh, from all of this road, I don't know about elevations, but, you know.
Yeah, and, um, without, cou- coupled to that, there, um, there are two water services that we have record of. Um, one is a, a two-inch, um, plastic service that was installed about twelve years ago. By the former, um, owner of fourteen Donahue, which, uh, I'm the current owner. Um, he put that in for his own sole domestic water service. Um, from what I'm being told, there is an existing three-quarter to one inch. three-quarter to one-inch uh water service that serves the remaining houses. And uh the the condition is unknown, so um you know, this this project also has an opportunity to, you know, improve the domestic water for for all the butters.
You're going to be able to handle your sewerage on your property, right?
Yes, yeah, we we did do some some per tests and um we are proposing a septic system for our new building.
Yeah, there was a comment somewhere about where it could or couldn't be, what was not, what is there? Okay, well.
Any other?
I have a question.
But follow up.
Um, yeah, um, Mike, did you follow up with the Board of Health about the paved area overlapping with this, the proposed septic?
Um, yeah, Fiona, good question. Um, I believe Connor Stone is addressing that. I believe that was one of their list of questions, whether it was from Graves or the Board of Health, but that that that's on their radar. Their um subsequent submission should address that.
Am I hearing that there's more changes to be made? You know, when you're talking about ongoing work, engineering and whatnot, in other words, weren't, we wouldn't be closing the hearing tonight?
Yes, there's some Graves comments for um, I don't have them in front of me, but um adding uh dumpster pad and enclosure provisions. Um, I I don't have them in front of me with some other minor um plan review comments that uh Connor Stone's working on.
Anything further from the board?
Just a question on the the plan that's on the screen, the the red lines, which roughly correspond to Donahue Lane, are those the lot lines, existing lot lines as far as we know?
Yeah, that is um what's been surveyed by um Connor Stone as part of their existing condition survey.
Yeah.
Um, I I believe the scale across is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-one feet. Um, I don't have a ability to scale it right now, but um that's kind of the existing condition that we're working working from um. Anything beyond that, obviously, would have to involve the butters and and um see if they'd be open to some type of of easement um. But to answer your question, yes, that those are the surveyed lot lines.
Yeah, but either there's a right of way or the property owners own that or an easement maybe.
Or the owner, or the owner is unknown.
Yeah, I think the owners are mostly known here, aren't they?
Well, the question is between the, between the lot lines on the opposite side of Donahue Lane. Uh, if those are the surveyed lot lines, then kinda leaves open the question, well, who owns in between?
No, I'm I'm saying that I'm not sure that that's the correct uh conclusion to make about where the actual lot lines are. Um, whoever sold that land um to the whoever broke up the lots either owns, um they either drew plans that put lines where they where we see them here or um uh I I I don't know.
Yeah, that's the, that's the point. We don't, we without.
And and I think there's been about fifty years of this. I've been hearing about it as long as I can remember.
All right. I don't see or hear anything further from the board. So now would be the time for any questions or comments from the public?
Good evening, this is John Renzoni from Seven Jordan Terrace. Uh, got just a few questions. I'll start at the beginning of the project, the first uh, the actual building and contractor's yard. Uh, I looked at the plans extensively and I see they got the footprint of the building. We don't have an actual plan of what the building is going to be, any plans for the building. So we know, like, where any overhead doors may be facing, whether they're gonna be facing towards Hollywood Drive or not. Uh, and he did, Mike did answer one of my questions as to the building height, you know, uh, he said twenty-four feet. Uh, with the elevation of the pad for the building at three ninety-eight, you add twenty-four feet, that's four hundred and two feet. Uh, the backyards on Hollywood Drive right now are at three ninety-eight. Oh, I'm sorry, three seventy-eight is the pad for the building. So it'll end up being, the top of the building, it'll end up being four feet above the current backyards on Hollywood. Which I don't think is gonna be real nice for the people on Hollywood Drive to be looking out their backyards at. Uh also, uh what's gonna be the primary use of the buildings, Mike?
Okay, yeah, so for your first comment, um so we did put a a landscape berm uh along the Hollywood Drive um area. So if you look, there's, uh, if you wanna look at the top of the berm, you can zoom in.
That top of the berm is at three ninety-eight, which is currently the same elevation as the backyards on Hollywood Drive. Not including the plantings.
Yeah, so we we making provisions to, you know, ha- putting a landscape berm in with some plantings for for um privacy and um you know, I think we also have an opportunity if that berm needed to be raised, we we do have some area to work with. Um, so if we need to raise that berm another few feet, um be more than happy to to make that change. Um, the second part of your question was the the use of the building, so um we would be proposing, and I I believe this was uh another comment that um Connor Stone was working on actively. Um, we would be proposing garage doors on um the, call it the east and west, so upper and lower portions of the site. Yep, up in that, yep. And there probably would be three to three on each end, depending on how the boxes lay out. Um, they would be oversized doors and and we would be um using it for storage or, you know, maintenance of equipment inside the building. Um, things associated with our excavating company.
So you would be doing equipment maintenance inside the building?
Yes.
And you just mentioned, so three of the doors would be facing towards Hollywood Drive?
Yes.
Okay, so if there was any, usually I know equipment maintenance is done usually after hours. Uh, so that could end up being a noise concern later in the evenings?
Um, our our hours don't go past five P M, um even in the summers. Um, we're typically, you know, operating there seven, seven to five.
And that is something that we can also have something about in our condition.
Yes, cuz I know I've worked construction for thirty years, so I know sometimes maintenance does run into later hours, so. Uh, so we've we've covered the overhead doors. Material stockpiling on the site, are you gonna predominantly be stockpiling on the north end of the site? Or are you gonna be on the north and the south end where I see there's gravel on both ends of that proposed plan?
Um, so the compacted gravel storage yard, um, so that's basically the predominant large area to the left of the building.
Right, on the north end of the site?
Yeah, so that would, that would be the proposed area. Um, it would be miscellaneous pipe, you know, shoring boxes, uh spoils from, you know, a a project that um we're we're moving uh back and forth. Um, so that would be the area that 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 material would be stored.
So you're saying it's gonna predominantly be uh construction materials, like you said, piping, uh structures? Uh, you're not gonna have as much stockpiled earth and materials as you do now on site?
No, no, we're actually trying to um, you know, alleviate the the stockpiles that are currently there and repurpose them on our jobs right now.
Yeah, cuz that's a little bit of a concern, cuz right now, those stockpiles, even now at the elevation that the site is at, those stockpiles are clearly visible from my house on Jordan Terrace. And they're talking about lifting the elevation of the site fifteen feet before they even start putting the building in. So if there's any more stockpiled material, that's gonna be up pretty high, and it's gonna be clearly visible.
Yep, that's a good, that's a good question, and um it's not our intent to extend any stockpiles above the landscape berm area.
Yeah, well, intent and and final outcome can sometimes be two different things. Uh so, Vic, could we put a restriction, if we do have stockpile any materials on the site, could there be any restrictions not to get the height of the material stockpiles any higher than, let's say, the top of the berm?
I I would think that it's something the planning board has the ability to put in our conditions about, you know, height of, you know, stockpiled materials, you know.
All right, so Mike, you you plan on predominantly just stockpiling uh construction materials. Uh, so you don't plan on doing any processing of any materials on the site, any rock crushing, any screening, anything like that that has occurred in the past down there?
No, because we're trying to actually get rid of all the material that's there now. Um, so, you know, we're we're just trying to allow ourselves to be able to store, you know, various, you know, pipes and and structures like you mentioned. We're not looking to, you know, turn this place into a quarry at all. I mean, that's not, you know, that's not what we're doing. There there's other areas that we're looking, uh we're looking for other land e- elsewhere as to, you know, essentially keep our stockpiled material, so um this is purely a investment for the company long term. Um, but also to, you know, align with how much we've scaled up, so.
Right, I know I've seen you grow over the last couple of years, but that's why I'm just a little concerned with making sure that this doesn't become an area where we end up with a large stockpile of material and there's processing going on down there, which gets a little loud, and the neighbors up in Hollywood have mentioned that it has gotten loud in there sometimes where they're, you know, that and when trucks are dumping rocks in concrete down there, you know, banging off the tailgates, it gets a little loud. Uh, so that was just a concern that I wanted to bring up to make sure that that wasn't something that's gonna be going down there. Uh, now, as for equipment stored on the site, uh in the town bylaws, it says it stores for equipment and supplies and parking of wheeled vehicles. So are we going to allow tracked vehicles to be parked down there? Bulldozers, excavators, I mean, technically in the bylaws, it says wheeled vehicles.
I I didn't follow that.
I don't know. One can probably argue that tracked vehicles are comparable to wheeled vehicles. I don't know how because that that may be a the interpretation of that may be uh appropriate to ask the building inspector about.
Well, I know that in past discussions with the planning board, I know that usually you guys are very tight on what the the bylaws say, and that's
There there may also be case law or something else that says that, yes, they
Okay, I was just, I was just curious as to if that was gonna be, not that that's a a big issue, but I just wanted to, again, bring that up. Uh, size of the building is obviously going to increase quite a bit. Uh, we got twenty-six parking spots that are proposed for the building. So we're going to obviously see, I'm guessing, an increase in traffic down there, and I know that the town planner has mentioned that they would like to see a traffic study done again. I know in twenty fifteen, when a special permit was applied for for the initial use of that property, they wanted a traffic study done, and they waived it at the time with the option to revisit it if that site, anything changed with that site in the future. Uh, it was on the planning board's member from Fiona on March first?
Yes.
Yes. So I'd like to know if, Mike, if you plan on there being an increase in traffic down there. I mean, if you're gonna be parking equipment on the site, I'm guessing probably dump trucks are gonna be parked down there, possibly uh utility trucks. Uh, so it could be an increase in the traffic up and down Donahue Lane. So I'm wondering if
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's a good, uh, yeah, it's a good question. Um, so a- as a company right now and our and our proposed use of the building, we wouldn't be scaling up uh any full-time staff down there. We currently have um three full-time staff members um on twenty-two Donahue right now. Um, and that isn't changing um in the near future, I can, I can tell you that. Um, the purpose of the the building um is to make provisions for the future, um depending on which way that goes. Um, and an investment long-term, um long when I'm gone for my kids, so.
Right.
Um, so, um, but the the current use, we haven't scaled up as a company as far as overhead staff, so um, we don't intend on increasing the amount of people that are currently um there full-time.
How many trucks do you have right now that you are running right now?
Uh, we we have one trailer dump.
Oh, that's it? You only get the one trailer dump? You got no tri axles, no ten-wheels, nothing like that? All right, so.
I don't like trucks.
Yeah, I'll say.
It's just hot maintenance.
I'll say from my point on this, on the planning board as well as that, you know, knowing that you don't have any current plans to scale up, but the, you know, as far as staffing, but the intent of this change is to allow you to scale up, knowing, you know, like what your, like eventual potential max is, you know, at that building, and how that would affect traffic is something that I think, you know, planning board would wanna know, or have some way, you know, I don't know that we can, I have to think about this a little bit, about conditioning, you know, that that max staff to be as is, or if it's gonna change, and we, does it change, you know, change to the you know, prove approval that we'd have to take up at with the traffic study in the future, but that's just a thought I'm having, I wanted to say it out loud.
Right, no, I I understand. It's just like I said, it it is going out onto a state road, you know, state layout, so I mean, it's if the traffic was gonna increase, you know, it might be something to look at, but it all depends on what happens with the building, what happens with the site, and like you said, what's gonna happen in the future. Uh, Mike knows, it can go either way. He could grow very large, or he could be selling the property in two years.
Yeah, I mean, I I would ask the board, um, you know, given the fact that we are not increasing, proposing any increase right now for um our current staff, but maybe a provision if, you know, we intend to um, you know, try to sublet a portion of the building or uh change in a a leasing where we become a landlord, you know, maybe something of that nature that could trigger um based on, you know, who that tenant would be, but I I I I would probably ask the board if they could also waive the traffic study, just given the fact the current um use of the building is is not increasing.
I'll, I'll probably have staff, you know, look into, you know, what we could condition in that sense and, you know, like how we can you know, facilitate that, because if if we can't condition in some way that, you know, that current usage in terms of, you know, traffic and people, then it's nothing, not something at least for me, that I'd be comfortable waiving the traffic study with this change. But if we can condition it, then we can probably, you know, figure something out that works out.
Yeah, cuz something Mike just said kinda threw up a little red flag that, you know, if he does decide to lease the building in the future, and let's say he leases it to a trucking company. You know, will the board have any recourse at that point when the traffic on Donahue Lane is, you know, increases dramatically?
If it's a trucking company, I would think that would would be a change of use, and that would trigger, you know, a need to come back to us, but if it's staying a country, our contractor's yard, but the company that leased it to has, you know, fu- ten times the number of employees, you know.
Right, but I mean, it would still be already under Mike's ownership, so if he just leased it to somebody else, would he have have to come before the planning board? He could just lease it to somebody.
If there's a use change, yes. If it stays the same use and the conditions that we apply in our decision, you know, don't have to change, then no.
It would be a contractor's yard where it says you can park wheeled vehicles, so I mean
Yeah, it
He could park fifteen dump trucks down there.
So, so the approval the board would give So so the approval the board would give on this, if we do approve it, would be based upon the use that is currently proposed by the applicant.
Correct.
Now, if something about that use changes significantly, that would then take it beyond the scope of the approval. That would require further re- review by the board, either.
Somebody would have to bring it to the attention of the board.
All we can do is issue an approval based upon what the applicant is actually proposing.
Correct.
We can't, we can't engage in too much speculation because, you know, we we really can't approve based upon, you know, some speculative idea about what might possibly someday happen.
Correct, so but would the the residents of Hollywood Drive have any recourse at that point? They would have to come back before the board and and bring it to your attention?
Presumably, if 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 Mike here needs to get uh uh approval from the board for an expansion of this use or a different use, that would come back through the public hearing process.
And that would be up to Mike to come to you?
Yeah.
And if there was a condition that we establish in, you know, whatever approval we end up making that is against, you know, what, you know, that he's doing against that decision that's wrong, that would go before the planning department slash zoning enforcement officer for the town. That that wouldn't come directly to us.
Okay, we'd go to the zoning officer first and then it might end up back here. Another question I had was the operating hours of the site. I mean, I see that he proposed uh in his application, Monday through Saturday, seven AM to seven PM. I know typical operating hours for construction is seven to three thirty. And I know there's some time afterwards, if you gotta go back to the shop, drop off equipment, drop off trucks. It would seem to me that it might be a little more reasonable for the residents of Hollywood if it was seven to five and eliminate the the Saturday, Monday through Friday. You know, if you're home Saturday and Sunday and one day of that that weekend, you're gonna have to listen to to equipment moving down down below. You know, it's gonna be disruptive to the neighbors. So I wonder if the board can put a restriction on that, on the operating hours, uh so it doesn't disrupt. I mean, it's it's, it can be disruptive as it is already with what's going on down there sometimes with dumping the material, which Mike said that they're gonna stop doing. But a lot of people are working from home now and that noise distraction can get a little loud sometimes.
Yep, but but certainly a condition the board can can make, and I believe, um, the applicant did just say that he's okay with, you know, till five. But, you know, that's something that we can.
Right, 'cause I mean, the the seven to seven hours are generally for construction sites, it says in in the zoning bylaws. And I mean, it's not a construction site, it's gonna be a contractor's yard, so. That's why.
The hours of construction could be still a little bit longer, but the.
Correct.
Hours of operation would be the.
Right, and that's why I just, you know, it seemed a little, a little long on hours, seven, you know, seven PM at night and also on on Saturdays. So I mean, that might be a concession that might make it a little more palatable. Uh you guys already touched on the septic system, which I had saw in the plans that there was paving over a section of the septic system, which you guys are gonna address, obviously, 'cause that can't be done. So that covers everything I had basically for the proposed site plan. And now Donahue Road was a whole different set of questions, but I think some of them are irrelevant since we don't know who owns Donahue Lane. But my my first question was gonna be if a set of plans was gonna be submitted for what you plan on doing on Donahue Lane. You know, in respect, 'cause to widening, uh you had mentioned you weren't going to do anything in the way of drainage. And I know that the fire department had wanted a type C road put in, which was the minimum width allowable in town, which was twenty-four feet. And what I've measured down there, that there were sections where he's gonna get more than twenty-two feet in. Without incurring into wetlands, uh taking driveways, as Mike had mentioned. And you can't do anything on the west side of the the road due to uh utility poles being in there right now. So he can only go one way until he gets to the north end of Donahue Lane and then the poles switch over to the other side of the road. So I mean, are there gonna be any plans submitted for what he plans on doing on Donahue Lane? Assuming he gets some type of approval to do any work on that?
You know, I I'll say if there is any agreements made and he figures out, you know, who owns, you know, who owns that, who can give him the right to do that. And, you know, that's something I would wanna see on what exactly he's, you know, doing that we can, you know, talk about and, you know, decide along with this, you know, application. That's, you know, at least for me, because, you know, that, you know, as you mentioned, the fire, you know, fire comments are something that is, you know, interesting to think about in deciding on an approval or not on this. And that, you know, the width of the road is one of the constraints there.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it could probably be done, but it's gonna take a little more work than I think it looks like. And that's why I wanted to know if they were, if he does plan on continuing with this, if he was going to submit a set of plans for what he plans on doing with the road, you know, elevation-wise and width-wise. You know, and also, since it's gonna fall under a minor road C in the subdivision rules, uh you're gonna require any sidewalks or berms on the road. But now that it's a private lane, do you have any jurisdiction in that?
No, I mean, consideration is like that conceivably could apply if there was an intent to have this road accepted as a public way.
Right.
But if if it is to be maintained as a private way, uh and basically he's talked proposing to widen it to, you know, to the the twenty-four feet to meet the fire department's requirements. So that 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 goes part of the way towards meeting the requirements for a public way, but it's not going all the way. And, you know, unless 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 there is some some plan to ultimately get this road improved to the point where the town can accept it as a public way. Uh, you know, the requirements, generally speaking, the requirements in the subdivision rules are, you know, can be taken as suggestions.
Right, they they don't necessarily apply due to the fact that it's a private road, so.
And I I just, I would say, you know, if I was in a butter and, you know, my decision would come to, you know, can we, you know, can you do this to the road? If it was, you know, up to me, and this is, you know, kinda off the cuff is, I would probably like to say, can you put in a sidewalk for us? You know, that would be one thing that I would consider and that would, you know, help lead me towards saying, you know, yes, do this, but that, you know, like, I'm not the decision maker in this case, but it's.
I know there's children down there and I know if there's gonna be truck traffic back and forth. I mean, I I'm sure his drivers are safe and all, but I mean, it'd be nice to, if if he's gonna improve the road, like you said, it'd be nice to put if the sidewalk in, if it was a town road.
Yeah.
Uh but since it's not a town road, I mean, I don't know if.
Now, just hypothetically, not to get too far off topic, 'cause we got, I'm sure a lot more that we wanna discuss. But if the butters to have Donahue Lane are sufficiently interested in getting the road upgraded to public way standards, you know, there's, they 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 may, they may wanna try to, you know, see what can be done along those lines. But at at some point, you're getting beyond the scope of this project.
But and then at that point, the town would be interested in accepting the road if it was done to to the mi- minor road C specifications.
It's probably just a whole nother topic, though.
Right, that's what it seems like now that I know it's it's a a private road. It kinda, there's not a whole lot to discuss there until Mike determines who owns the road and gets approval one way or another to do what he wants to do. So I guess my last question would be, if the road is not improved or widened, will that affect the project at the end of the road at all? Now that the fire department has concerns about the width of the road, the safety and the the ability to turn a fire truck around at the end of that road?
That that would be something that the planning board would need to, you know, further discuss, further think on and, you know, deliberate on. That that could say, you know, this is, like, you know, options in my own head here is, you know, we could say, no, the road is not up to standard, you can't, you know, add as extra use. It it could be, well, you need to add some, you know, a, you know, space for the fire apparatus to turn around, you know, for, you know, this, you know, length of a fire apparatus, you know. There's, you know, a bunch of options there that might work out, that might not work out, but there's, you know. I'm not prepared to make a an opinion statement on that for myself today, but that's something that.
No, it was just a question that I wanted to bring up to get it out there, that, you know, the fire department has had concerns before and they allowed it in twenty fifteen, but now, you know, they have mentioned again that they'd like the road brought up to standards.
Let's just say the board will have to take that into consideration and reaching a decision.
The water you're putting in, um, is that adequate for the fire department? Or do they have to bring their water?
It it's a eight-inch duct domain. It's adequate to serve the hydrants and it's ade- adequate to serve fire suppression for the building.
Will there be any hydrants along Donahue Lane?
Yes, uh if if you go to the uh sheet three of three, there should be, um, I believe there every five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
If I may, Justin, but conversations between myself, the applicant, zoning enforcement officer and the fire department, um, you know, we really can't see how this is going to move forward without meeting those minimum requirements of the fire department. Um, that was something that was agreed upon by all all town staff. Um, it's just not safe otherwise.
So the project won't move forward unless we can get the road to twenty-four feet?
Yes.
I I'll, I'll say just as, you know, putting a point on the technicality, you know, that's, you know, staff's opinion. That is, you know, what staff in the fire department have, you know, said. Ultimate decision is the planning boards. I, you know, the planning board generally defers to expertise of staff and fire and, you know, that, you know, but ultimately it is, you know, the planning board's decision on do we allow this or not.
So even if the the fire department determines that they need a twenty-four-foot road, you can override that?
I believe that we can say this is, you know, suitable to do a thing is.
If it's over, if they can't get a twenty-four-foot road, will the project move forward?
I don't know that for certain.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have two questions coming in from Zoom. Uh, one question is, will the existing trees between the lots on Hollywood and the berm remain? Or will the entire area be raised and landscaped?
Um, they're gonna remain um as much as we can past the berm. So if you go to the other page, our intent is to keep the vegetation intact. And only remove enough to construct the landscape firm.
Yeah, so everything up in this area here is expected to remain.
Correct, and I I believe as part of the uh submission, uh one of the sheets is an existing conditions sheet and then a a proposed clearing limits sheet.
Yeah, these are the only, the only three sheets I have.
Yeah, I think you just have three for presentation purposes.
There's a different, a different set of plans that has more detail.
Yeah, it should show the proposed clearing limits.
So the other, the other question from Zoom is, could you explain any lighting, lighting plans and the impact on neighboring properties?
Uh, yep, good question. Um, we've, we've only proposed uh wall packs on the building. Uh, we have no intent to put uh light poles um within it for that reason. Um, so we would, I I believe on the building footprint, if you zoom in, there's um three wall packs on each side. Yep.
Yeah, wall pack, wall pack.
Yep, two on, two on the short ends and three on the long ends.
Yep. Wall pack, wall pack, yeah. So that's, the wall packs identified on the plan are the sum total of the lighting plan for this.
Yes.
Okay, that's the, that's all I have on Zoom for the moment.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steve Ari. I live at thirteen Hollywood Drive. Uh, my home is in a budding property. Just wanna review a few things, um, in addition to what John had mentioned. Um, the proposed expansion would bring up multiple quality of life concerns for my family and myself. Um, first thing is air pollution from potential equipment um and vehicles coming and going. The second would be noise pollution, um, with more traffic in the area as well as the vehicles coming much closer to our homes. It's already impacted our ability to work remotely as well as having company over in our homes. Um, it's been extremely loud during the pandemic and very difficult to get things done. The third concern is light pollution from the new road, the new building and vehicles coming and going. The initial turn of the road that you can see, uh my property is at the corner of Hollywood Drive, with this new road, the headlights would be coming right into my kitchen, um, and it doesn't seem like there's much berm there. There's only like three evergreens that they would put in between, um, so that's a major concern for me.
Getting to where I can't hear him, and could we move what's on the screen to see uh his location?
Yes, so sorry about that. I'll be closer to the microphone. So my home is right at the corner where that road starts to turn right. Um, I'm at the corner, thirteen Hollywood. Right where the mouse cursor is now. So I have concerns about the truck headlights coming right into my kitchen, um, and there isn't much berm or um proposed um evergreens um for that. Um, in addition, the mounds that are currently there, stockpiled, it's about to the height of my kitchen window. Um, and so I know we talked about different heights of things, so that's just currently with what is there now. Um, if you were to look at a photo from outside of my kitchen, you would not be happy with what you see. Um, the next concern that I have um is soil contamination from any materials used or stored on site. And then bringing that all together, it's a general quality of life and safety. Um, the expansion would impact residents from enjoying their property as well as the safety for children and pets in the area. Um, in addition to all of that, each of the concerns would impact property value for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, question on on, I'm looking at the drawing on the, on the uh upper side, Hollywood Drive side. And there's, we have a lot of contour lines, but then as we head a little further towards the property, the budding properties, there's nothing. Is that absolutely flat within one contour line or is it just not detailed? See where I mean?
Yeah, you can see, you know, there are contour lines and they're very, the the dark ones are the proposed contours.
I can't see that. Okay, I see it. I'm trying to come, well, I'll have to do it some other way. I can't read that. But uh that whole visibility thing is gonna be a concern to me. I think, I think I saw something like the proposed, yeah, the proposed evergreens, six to eight feet tall, fifteen feet on center, um, is kind of, that's, that's gonna have a lot of open space in between. It's sort of like, well, not quite, like the circles and the spaces between them illustrate, but um not very heavy screening. So um maybe not tonight, but as we go along, I'd look at trying to maximize screening. We we might even needed uh some cross-sections to see what this actually looks like uh across into the uh abutting properties, so we, so we can see better about how high things are and we can see what. Get a higher berm, high enough berm and the noise and light become less issues too.
Justin, if I may. Mike, I think a lot of the concerns that were outlined in the planning department's memo have been echoed here by the public. Um, if you could, when you're doing your analysis that follows up with cornerstone, um, if you could just issue a formal response kind of addressing the concerns in my memo as well, that'd be greatly appreciated. I'm just noticing a lot of overlap. Thank you.
Will do.
And I will say for the, you know, for the public, it was mentioned just now that, you know, if we saw the current height of the, you know, existing, you know, stockpiles, you know, from Hollywood Drive, you know, residents, you know, it would be, you know, at least from the public's perspective, useful for the board. You know, and I will just say that going through the, you know, planning department's website or, you know, email in the planning department, they can submit, you know, a picture or, you know, a few to be on the public record for this project, you know, for the board to look at. You know, I would welcome, you know, at least like one or two for myself. That'd be some of that, you know, I'd be happy to see. Just to kind of get an idea on how that, you know, stockpile is today. You know, that would be, you know, something that would be useful because we did mention earlier that we, we might consider doing a condition on how those, you know, how this whole boss can be. If you're gonna speak, I would want you to come back to the microphone, but.
Where would you like me to submit those photos? Just within the link on the Donahue project?
Yeah, that'd be the, or you.
We, sorry, Justin, we, we have a contact form on our website, um, and also, um, you know, you can submit it directly to me. My information is on planning department's site, Fiona Coffin is my name, so you can send it directly to me or through the form.
Okay.
And call me or whatever, yeah. I think probably email would be better if you're taking photos, et cetera.
I'll email them to you.
Just, just in the email, make sure it's, you note the project name, you know, uh, where this is for, so that it doesn't get confused.
Thank you.
I just wanna, um, reiterate the traffic concern.
Just name and address for the record, please, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Your name and address for the, for our record.
Gale Lane and I'm on eight Jordan Terrace.
Thank you.
And I wanna reiterate the traffic concern because I do a lot of walking and I can't get out of Hollywood Drive on a good day in my car, never mind walking. I see there are students that walk to the post office to get their bus. You can't, the traffic coming from the west side, which is the Donahue Lane side, is coming too fast. So I propose a light if there's going to be extra traffic back at Hollywood Drive.
Thank you for your comments. I, I will just say that, that being a state road, a light is nothing that the, the town of Grafton could impose on the, you know, on the road. We, we could recommend it to this, you know, have recommended to the state, but we cannot, even, you know, nobody in Grafton can say directly that we will put a light on a state.
Can, can we bring back the light that used to be there at Hollywood Drive?
There it is, and you, there's not even a cross light.
It would be.
Don't know why.
So, can, put it in your notes to re- revisit that one. Thank you.
The, the state didn't wanna.
Yep.
Uh, there was a full light and then it became a, a, a flashing yellow, didn't it? For walk, um, and this, and that was removed.
Yeah, disappeared entirely.
We, we have people who could help us with all that, uh, here in town on the boards.
Yeah, that's, that's probably a, a, an idea that has some merit independent of this particular project.
Yes, and it's beyond, uh, anything that we can do.
Yeah.
Are there any further comments from the board, staff, or the public?
Nope, there's, it's clearly, it's going to be continued. There's clearly some work to be done to follow up on, submissions up to this point and all the discussion tonight.
So, the, the board is generally happy to give you however long you feel you need to address some or all of our comments, you know, tonight for, to continue until our next hearing or the one after that, or even, you know, further along if, you know, that's something that you wanna do. So when would you like to continue until, like?
What, what's the deadline for submission to the board from next, um, the next meeting?
I'll say generally we'd like to have it like a week in advance roughly.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send that right away.
I, I think we'll be able to accommodate that. We have a couple of weeks.
All right, so our next meeting is April tenth. Is that what we're looking for?
Four ten, um.
Following that, it's April twenty fourth.
If, if we got it to the board, um, by Monday, the third, a week from today, would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
That should be fine.
Yeah, that would give us a, a, a week to review the information prior to the hearing.
And.
That would be fun.
And as a, you know, we can continue to the tenth as well, and if you end up needing more time, you could always send a, you know, a written letter to the planning department to request a continuance of the board and we, we're usually pretty, pretty considerate on doing that. So, if I heard you correctly, requesting a continuance till April tenth at seven thirty P M, would you will follow up by email? With staff or?
Yes, sir. Email.
Yep. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion. Grant, grant the applicant's require, written, to be received, written request to continue this hearing to Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty P M.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassaner.
Aye.
Ms. Hassaner.
Aye.
And I vote aye, uh, because the motion carried unanimously of those present, and we will take this up again on April tenth. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for your input.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Make sure our stenographer's all set.
I don't know who's on the screen under my name, probably, um, it's probably Tim Burks, since I forwarded him my link.
Okay. Tim Burks?
Yeah.
When, when you introduce everyone, then you'll see who he looks like if he turns on his picture.
Yeah, I don't know if he's gonna end up speaking. I think he just wanted to hear.
Yeah, I'm on if you can hear me. There, Mike.
Yep. Good.
Great, thank you. Hi, uh, Michael Giamo, representing Selco Partnership, doing businesses for Verizon Wireless. So we've been in front of you a number of different sessions and the projects evolved. We have submitted revised plans showing the elevation of a shorter tower, fifteen foot height reduction since our last meeting, and along with that, photo simulation showing the shorter tower and, uh, very recently, only today did I get these. But I did file them and I don't know if they're uploaded or, or not. Um, there were, uh, the same photo sims that went out a few days ago, but with a cropped view, uh, consistent with what Mr. Maxson had recommended in his report, uh, January eleventh. So that, um, there won't be any, uh, claim that the, the views are distorted. Um, I think if you look at those views, or when you look at those views, and I don't know if you wanna pull them up, Mr. Robbins, if you do have them, if not, I apologize for getting so late.
One we, we have is the twenty-third, I believe, is.
We don't have.
Okay. Yeah, they ju, they really just did come in very quickly.
Oh, go ahead, Natalia.
Oops.
Dahlia?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Um, you do have the twenty-seventh uploaded. It's the last exhibit.
Not on the page I'm looking at.
Oh, oh gosh.
Yeah, agreed. I do not have that.
Well, they might, they might not have made it through, but, but you, you, you should look at those. I think you, you will see that there's no, it's, it's very clear that there's not much going on from the Grafton side of things. The views are distant and, and small, and the reduced height tower is nestled within the tree lines from any place it's visible within, uh, the Grafton side of things. From, from the Sutton side of things, obviously, it's a shorter tower than it was before, but it's still gonna be visible above those buildings, but of course, those buildings are, are built on the same parcel that was severed for that project and, um, controlled the, the destiny of the project of the site we're on because it's, it's conditioned on a conservation restriction to the town. So our proposed tower site would be surrounded by restricted land, um, which means there's not gonna be any tree clearing or anything that, that goes beyond, uh, what's shown on these plans to, to make sure that there's not a, a greater impact at any future time. Um, we evaluated, Mr. Maxson had suggested another site on that same property. We evaluated that. And really from a practical and impact standpoint, um, that site is not an improvement over the proposed site, even with a shorter tower. It's on a higher part of the hill. It would require clearing at the top of the ridge. It would require a much longer driveway. I'm gonna ask Jesse Marino, who's our, uh, civil engineer, to explain some of the impacts that he looked into in terms of even accessing that, that location. Jesse, do you wanna come do a mic?
Yeah, sure, do it. So, uh, based on Mr. Maxson's sketch, um, we took a look, um, in-house here at, um, how we might access that, that portion of the back. This is that area towards the back.
Do we have that submitted in our records at this point?
Uh, me, David, David Maxson submitted that, yeah.
That's David Maxson's memo. Um, so what we found here is, um, as we move north on the site, um, the grades get steeper. The lot gets a little bit narrower, um, getting to the location that, uh, David has, has, um, suggested here, um, we found that there's some significant increases in clearing, grading, and, um, length of road. So, um, um, we ran some internal calculations in-house and what we came up with, we'd have to extend the driveway another nine hundred feet, which is a pretty significant, that's another fifty percent again, what we have now. Uh, the reason for that is, is, you know, as we traverse up the slope, we have to kind of make some switchbacks to keep the, the grades, um, you know, at ten percent or so. Um, and, uh, in order to do that, we gotta extend the length of the road. When you do that, um, of course, we have to have some additional clearing and grading there, so you're looking at adding, um, you know, well over an acre of additional clearing. Um, you know, that's a forty to fifty percent increase in the clearing. Um, with that, you're gonna get more gravel, more truck trips, you know, all of the stuff that comes along with that. Um, as far as stormwater, uh, certainly can be mitigated, but as we get towards the north part of the site, we end up going into a different watershed instead of going sort of southerly and towards Cronin Brook. That's sort of a different watershed there, so there'll be an increase in the number of basins we need in that area. So all in all, um, you know, certainly from a civil engineering standpoint, feasible to get there, but a big increase in the, in the amount of clearing, grading, and disturbance on the lot.
And then you'd still have a, a pole at a higher elevation that's still visible. Um, you know, and probably more visible from the backside of the hill. Um, this site was selected kind of intentionally. I mean, it was, it was selected through a process. My understanding is there were previous planning staff were involved.
Yeah, we, we, um, this was started like in twenty fifteen and I can't remember the name at the time, but a different planner. We actually discussed how far off the ridge would be acceptable. You know, right now we're like four hundred, four hundred and fifty feet off the ridge line. To set the tower idea is that, um, you know, you're, you're trying to be cognizant of views from, from multiple locations. And I think this, although maybe, you know, RF benefit, perhaps, I don't know, I'm not an RF engineer, but you end up being on top of the ridge now, so any clearing, grading, things to do up there are magnified because now you're at the ridge. You're literally, you know, a hundred feet off the, of the ridge line, so, um, back at that time, it was discussed about keeping it off that side of the ridge, so, um, that's sort of where it ended up. Um, and then I know at the time, they looked at different heights, different locations, um, looking at, you know, of course, maximizing the coverage you get, but you also have to, you know, we have to have a road that's buildable, constructable, um, economically viable for them to build, you know. We add nine hundred feet to this road, you're well over a half mile in length of, of road, it starts becoming, you know, difficult to, uh, uh, not only build but maintain, you know, you're gonna have stormwater features on there. You know, plowing, keeping up with maintenance, it increases all those costs for as long as the, the project's, uh, project's built.
So the dri, the driveway to the existing site was designed to follow cart paths to the extent that they could to place the tower at a roughly level place to minimize grading, so we, we don't have any of those benefits. The, the other thing that's going on here, and I think y- you're all well aware of this because it was brought up at the very beginning of our hearing, um, this site is under a condition that requires a conservation restriction. The area that's been removed from that requirement is the area that's shown on your, on your plan. So we had some flexibility in terms of reducing the height of the tower. Um, it doesn't provide as good coverage, but it still provides adequate, sufficient coverage, desirable coverage for Verizon with the fifteen foot reduction in height, um, and so that's the, the reason for that change in proposal.
I, just one very simple question. I just, I do see Bob's hand, but a very simple question that I don't know if I asked you for. And I'm s, I'm only interested in the current proposal of one fifty-five and rather than the, you know, initial, you know, height, but does the tower require one of those blinking lights for like airplanes or helicopters and things?
It does not, no.
Okay.
We use, we used to see, um, a report from, that the FAA said it was okay. Less than two hundred feet, I think, is usually what I've heard, and this is. Um, but it was mentioned that conservation restriction protects the site from having trees cut and so on, and yet we're talking about cutting trees both, uh, at the current site and even more trees at the proposed site. Um, and how do those two things comport if you can go ahead and cut the trees you want to? Why can't more trees be cut? Uh, what, what protection is there really?
The, the, the proposed site is the, I, I don't know what the current, current site is, but w- w- we were calling the current site the one we proposed. Mr. Maxson proposed an alternative, uh, I think we're saying we're not pursuing that alternative because of the additional impacts and the additional cutting. The, the conservation restriction and the condition that Sutton's planning board put on this land has been, uh, it applies to the entire property now except for the proposed tower site and the proposed driveway access. And so outside of that area, that, you know, smaller clearing area that Mr. Marino just described, outside of that area, you would have a conservation restriction in place owned by a land trust or the town of Grafton or whoever it is that, that accepts that, uh, restriction. And it would prevent anything inconsistent with that restriction from taking place on that land, which I presume would include clearing any tall trees or anything that's not, uh, consistent with the conservation purpose of the land.
Yeah, I, I still don't follow the status of the land. You said Sutton put a conservation restriction on it.
Sutton put a condition on it.
A, a condition, uh, well, do you mean they said there has to be a conservation? Whatever it is. Um, done, and it hasn't been done with whomever gets it. Yep.
There, there's a requirement from Sutton that there be a conservation restriction put on this land. The, the landlord intends to put that conservation restriction on when this process is concluded, because then the, the area of the conservation restriction will be established.
Who's the property owner?
The property owner is, uh, it's okay, so, um, let's see. It's, it's a, yeah, Su, um, Sutton LLC is the name of it.
That's a, not the town of Sutton, that's the private.
That's the, that's the private, that's the private owner, right. That was, that's the same person who developed the condo complex or the the cluster, cluster development.
Aerial way.
Aerial way.
And, and did the Sutton, uh, requirement include the ability to carve this out? Or did it say the whole property?
Go ahead, Eve.
So, as I understand the background to this, when the development in Sutton was approved, there were a couple of parcels in both Sutton and in Grafton that were supposed to be, remained as open space and they were supposed to have conservation. as open space, and they were supposed to have conservation restrictions before occupancy or before building or whatever it was. The town of Sutton then allowed the buildings to go up without requiring the actual conservation restriction on it. And then at some later point, the developer went back to the town of Sutton and said, we're happy to conserve most of the parcel in Grafton, but we would like to be able to take this little piece out for potential development. And the town of Grafton, the town of Sutton said, okay. So there is no conservation restriction on any of it right now. There should have been, but there isn't. And so as part of this process, I believe the up, the, uh, the current landowner potentially will put one on. There is also a related but not relevant to the planning board discussion as to whether there is, has been adequate right of first refusal. The the land is in chapter 61 land, and it hasn't come out. That is a legal issue that I assume the applicant and maybe the board of selectmen and the assessor will deal with later. But at the end of this, all of the parcel in question in Grafton, except for the driveway and the site for this, for this tower, would be put under a conservation restriction, as was required by the Sutton planning board for the development in Sutton, but was never actually given to Grafton.
So.
So they're sort of, the, the, there's, it's a little bit muddy, but for the purposes of the planning board, they are allowed to ask for this, and they would put the rest of it into conservation restrictions.
Kind of a tangential curiosity question on that is, yeah, I, you might have the answer. Would the Grafton planning board be able to put some sort of condition that ensures the Grafton portion of the parcel, at least, is under a, you know, recorded conservation restriction before the tower's constructed or the or the access is constructed?
Yes, and I, and and the course of this, my learning curve, I believe that the applicant is before conservation for other reasons, and I think there might, as part of those negotiations, and I haven't been part of them, the conservation restriction might be discussed in that regard. The the town of Sutton basically gave building permits bef, even though there's a condition in the town of Sutton's approval of the subdivision or condo association, that they weren't supposed to allow it to be built before the restrictions were in place, they did anyway, and so we're sort of stuck in this position where everything's been built and we don't have what we were supposed to get.
Yep. My my thought, just kinda going.
But yes, the planning board could.
Is that, you know, if there's supposed to be a restriction, if the planning would would were to vote, you know, in favor of this, you know, proposal, would we have the ability to say, we, you know, we must have this part put in in conservation?
Yes.
You know, before that can be even, you know, constructed and everything else, that, you know, so that we can actually enforce what was intended in Sutton that they seem to not be enforcing, at least so far, and.
And in addition to that, the 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 planet, we would suggest that there also be a condition that the disposition of the land, whether it's in chapter land or not in chapter land and the right of first refusal, which has been debated among lawyers, which I've told you many times I am not one, and the assessors, the assessors and the board of selectmen, there should be a condition in any decision from the planning board that does not allow this to move forward until those issues have been worked out. So the the applicant knows that, but because there was an application in front of the board, you're just discussing this application and who owns the land and why is something to be worked out at a later date, and there should be a condition in any decision that this planning board makes to say, just because we've given approval or denial of this particular use, does not mean that we are just glossing over the fact that this is an issue that needs to be worked out with another board in town.
Yeah, I, in in terms of the chapter 61 issue, I mean, I think that is a legal issue, I don't know that that belongs in a condition. I mean, I wouldn't object if you had something in a permit that said that those issues still needed to be worked out, but in terms of dicta, in terms of dictating a particular result or a particular process, I think that's, that's really beyond the the planning board's responsibility. On the conservation restriction, I don't think there'd be an objection to a condition that required that that conservation restriction be be entered into as part of this process. My understanding from the landowner is that he has a form of restriction that Sutton and the state have agreed to. So, and and I think his proposal would be that that would be the same form that Grafton would be presented with as well, and in presumably, I mean, these conservation restrictions, if you've ever dealt with them, and I'm sure you have, the state has a pretty specific way they wanna see them.
Yep.
So, you know, from that standpoint, I think the, and from talking to the the owner, I think he expects there to be a conservation restriction on this property as part of this whole, you know, resolution of this whole process.
That seems to be the intent all around, just just kinda dotting the i's in my mind.
Right, right.
And we, we would, I I think that we would have town council look at any conditions to make sure, with regard to the chapter land, whatever, we would, it would, it would be a condition that would say, we don't have jurisdiction, but someone should work it out before this moves forward, and we would run it by lawyers.
That that would make sense.
But that's just the general gist of what needs to be put into a decision of any sort.
If this is chapter land, and it's undergoing a change of use, or anything that requires that process, then the town of Grafton, for example, could choose to exercise the chapter option and buy the land, and then, uh, not, I I don't think it would be, I don't think there'd be a permit at that point to build this tower unless the town agreed as property owner. And I, so I'm I'm not sure whether the right people are before us at this point.
My understanding from what everything staff has said and has been discussed is that the idea of it being chapter land or not, or and the current disposition of that land is something that is before the legal minded profession and not something that we can, you know, act with knowledge one way or the other. You know, we have to act as if the application is legally able to proceed, but we still should condition it in such a way that our town attorney says we can to to follow through with that.
Applications have to come to us, if I'm not mistaken, from the property owner.
They they current, it is, the current property owner has submitted this application. There is a difference of opinion, shall I say, between whether or not the current property owner believes they have already given the town its right of first refusal and whether or not the town administrator and the town's assessor and the boards that they are associated with agree with that assessment. So that is why we decided to move forward with the planning board's assessment of the potential change of use, and we will let the disposition of the land, the ownership of the land unfold after, if that's necessary. But there's a difference of, there's a difference of opinion, so rather than sort of litigate that difference of opinion at this point, the planning board, the planning, it's not within the planning planning board's purview necessarily. Right now, the owner of record is is attached to this particular, the current owner of record is attached to this particular application. That may change in the future, you're right, Mr. Hassinger, but it it wasn't within the planning board's purview to hold it up for that.
I would add two things. One, it's fairly common for, there's lots of land that's in 61A, and it's fairly common for projects to come before boards all the time, but it's still in 61A, there's still a process that it needs to be pulled out, but there's nothing that says that it needs to be pulled out prior to the application. Just has, the process just has to be done. The second thing I would add is that with the Sutton approval, it was adjusted to allow for this project. So the area of land that's set aside on here has been approved by Sutton. There, it was, I think it was amended.
It was a modified special permit, right.
Modified.
I think so, that's, you said that.
Yes, that that is not, that is not, that part is not in question. The issue is, it's still in chapter land, and so that might.
Well, it came up whether or not we could clear it and put it in, and from the, from the standpoint of the special permit in Sutton, that has been addressed.
Yeah, I think we got past that at least, yep.
But but Sutton can't take some some of the land out of chapter 61.
Right. No, that's a Grafton issue.
The town of Sutton doesn't do that. The property owner, the property owner, and in particular, the owner of the property in question here, that is a property upon which is proposed to build a cell tower, the owner of that property will at some point notify the town of Grafton that it is withdrawing that property from chapter 61. And at that point, the chapter 61 process will take place through the town of Grafton with all the respective departments and boards. And if, here's where it gets potentially interesting, this, if the special permit here is approved, if the property then becomes owned by the town of Grafton, the question is what happens to the special permit with a with a new owner?
It runs with the land. The special permit runs with the land, but the new property owner may decide that they're not interested in exercising it.
Right, so the town of Grafton would have the theoretical right to do this, you know, to continue to move forward with the cell tower, but it could also choose not to.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, the town, the town as a property owner then decides what happens with the special permit that in, that it bought, when it bought the land from chapter 61.
But that's a whole nother ball of wax in for a different board. So we've been trying to avoid this conversation because it's quite confusing, but it's.
But I think it's important.
It it definitely is very important, and so that will, that will, that will definitely, if, whatever decision the board, well, I guess it doesn't need to be a condition if the board does not approve the special permit, but if the board chooses to approve the special permit, there will be a condition written in, approved by town council for its legal wording that will require that this disposition process work itself out before they can exercise the special permit.
Okay.
Anything else from the board or even Mr. Maxson tonight before I open it to the public?
Natalia has made it, made visible the to the the latest photo simulation, if you'd like to.
Oh, yeah.
Display that.
I, yeah, I think if you wanna scroll through those, that would maybe be helpful.
So this, I think, is like the first.
Should be, I think it should start previous to that.
Yeah, I'd say this is, this is the first one in which the, you know, the 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 tower, this is the view, the view from the aerial circle where the town is, their tower is highly visible, but I go back to the beginning here.
Yeah, this is David Maxson. Can I interject here?
Absolutely.
Thank you, well, with Isotrop working for the town on this application. I appreciate the fact that the applicant went to the extra trouble of reformatting the the images. I think it it helps provide just a little less uncertainty in terms of the visual impact. Just based on the information I've just heard, it seems that the town of Sutton is willing to have the cell tower if it has authorized the property owner to carve out space for it. So as far as the pictures from Sutton depicting the cell tower, it strikes me that that has much less weight than it might have had before we heard that. And so I would just encourage everyone to focus on the images from Grafton to see how the, you know, how the tower looks in with its reduced height.
Yeah, so here's the first, the first of those images. This again is the tower at a height of 155 feet.
That's right.
With the images cropped as suggested by Mr. Maxson.
That's right, yep, same, with the same ratio that David asked for. You can see if, and you might need to zoom in to do this, but you can see the balloon is above the top of that tower. They left the balloon in the picture this time in order to, in order to show both the relative placement and also the the relative height difference. So you can see that that's, your your previous photo sims drew the tower in over where the balloon is with top of the tower. This shows you that the balloon is 15 feet above that.
Right, so the balloon is at a height of 170, and the top of the tower is at a height of 155.
Right.
So the gap between the two is 15 feet.
15 feet.
Before we get entirely away from Dave's comment, I don't know whether Sutton has any cell tower law, and I don't know what it says, and as far as I know, they haven't gone through any process, they have, to make any decision about any cell tower there. So I don't know that we can justify the the conclusion that they're okay with it.
I I agree with Mr. Maxson on this, though. There there was a special permit modification intentionally to carve out this land. If Sutton didn't wanna do that, they could have said no to the special permit modification, and they didn't.
Do they have a cell tower law?
I I I'm not, I I would say that I'm not sure, and I've tried to read some of the minutes. They did, they did carve out this piece. I'm not sure if there was a full-on discussion at the time that it was going to be a cell tower. The issue that Sutton Sutton wanted a certain amount of open space per unit, that was their calculation, and just covering out this small little piece still allowed that ratio that they were looking for. So I I'm not su, I don't know, and and maybe someone else does, but I I wouldn't, I would agree with Mr. Hassinger that I'm not 100% sure that Sutton knew or cared what was going to be. They were just looking at it from their subdivision regulations as to whether they could allow this piece to be cut off. And if you, if that's something that the board wants to know, I'm sure Fiona could talk to the planner in Sutton before the next meeting to see what it was they knew was gonna be there or not. They did agree to cut it out. I don't know if a discussion of what was gonna be there was part of that, was part of that conversation. I don't know if you were there.
The interesting question from Sutton's perspective would be, when they allowed this piece to be carved out, did they have an understanding that a cell tower might go there?
Right, and I don't know.
And that's, that's the question.
We can try to find out that information, but I I I do think it was, that the Sutton planning board wasn't thrilled about cutting out this parcel for, to allow for a new use, but felt that legally they didn't have, that they, that they were, they needed to. There was, again, we can find out more information, and if someone wants to look at the, the transcripts of of that meeting, but I don't know that it was, I don't know that the use was particularly laid out at that time.
I mean, I believe you have something in your, in the materials for this.
Yes, they did write the letter.
From Sutton, which doesn't object to the cell tower. What it does is it asks to make sure that that land is protected, that that the balance of the parcels protected. They're not, they're not complaining about the cell tower in that.
I would say, I I would be interested in the direct ask of that question, you know, of the question as we discussed tonight, and, you know, what, and if they respond.
I could tell you that, as part of that process, we did a bunch of drawings that showed what was actually being pulled out, the road, grading, all of that, so it was available.
Yeah, I know, I I just, I I'm not saying that they, I I'm I'm not saying that they didn't know, I'm also saying that, not saying that they did know. I just think that, to say that they took it out because they knew it was gonna be a cell tower at the time and didn't have a problem with it, I I would, I think that we need more discussion, if that's something that this planning board wants to take into consideration when they're making their decision.
It would be useful to have that on our record in, you know, formally.
Okay.
Did, did they know it was gonna be a cell tower? Did they know it was gonna be 175 feet? And did they know what that would look like? That's the only way you can make a conclusion about how they felt about it. And I don't think our bylaw is restricts itself to this ca, this situation where the visibility is from a different town. It's a question of, it says we wanna preserve the, you know, the landscape and all of that.
But I don't think the planning board in Grafton really has. But I don't think the planning board in Grafton really has the, the purview of protecting the residents in Sutton to preserve Grafton's rural landscape, which seems to be the, the concern here.
And they would have been a butter's.
They were all notified.
Yeah, so if they're not here, if the, a butter, the Sutton residents who are but the property are not here to speak, then they were notified. They can, they decided not to come. But that's a different question as to whether or not the planning board knew.
Should we roll through the rest of these, you think?
I was just gonna get to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And while you're doing that, this is David again. I apologize for creating a, a little of maelstrom there. Just suggesting that it, it perhaps would bear less weight than it might otherwise have borne in review. And while you're looking at, if you're moving ahead, looking at some of the other slides, uh, I just want to comment on some of the other remarks that I heard. Uh, one is that, uh, because the tower would be at the same elevation, I guess above sea level, that it would be, uh, more, uh, stark or more, more visible if it's on the, the top of the hill or near the top of the hill. And I think the point that I made in my letter was that, uh, that that location is about fifty-five feet higher in elevation. It could be something on the order of a one hundred and fifteen-foot tower, much closer to the tree line with much less of a gap between the antennas and the tree line, uh, immediately around the tower. Um, yes, it is closer to the summit, but, uh, one thing I noticed in the discussion was the difference between a summit and a ridge. So I think it's easy to note that wherever you are, uh, uh, with your cell tower on this hill, it's going to look like it's on the ridge. Maybe not at the summit of the ridge, but, but on that ridge line, uh, of, of, of open, uh, you know, visual line between trees and sky. Um, so, uh, I'm not saying that that's, it's bad or good, uh, uh, at present location or at the alternate near the summit, but, um, that's something to keep in mind is whether the, uh, the images that you're looking at, um, yeah, uh, I welcome you to go ahead and scroll ahead on these while I'm talking. Um, uh, you know, whether one or the other is, is more or less impactful to the community of Grafton. Um, and that pretty much covers it. I, I, I appreciate the fact that the applicant, uh, submitted these revised format photographs.
Yeah, if I may interrupt for a moment, uh, I think there's probably a motion that needs to be made right about now. And traditionally Linda makes the motion.
Yes, it is now eight minutes of the hour, and I move that we vote to let the meeting go beyond ten o'clock.
Second.
Do we have to? All right, I have a motion and a second to extend the meeting past ten. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Miss Hassinger.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
The enthusiasm.
Well, I, I'm listening to a cold rain outside on our skylight.
So, continuing through the pictures here.
Sure, and so, and this is another picture. I mean, I think, I think again, the arrow in the last frame on the right shows you where the tower is, but I would defy you to see it on the rest of it without zooming in. It's very, very hidden with that, that reduction of fifteen feet. It wasn't very visible before, but now it's much less visible on that side.
By the way, I wonder how much of the hiding, um, is coming from trees that are going to come down around the site and the road.
From this direction or east, so most of the trees are coming down from the west side.
Well, you're gonna take trees down all, all around the site itself, aren't you? You know, to get.
Yeah, yes, that's true. But we're on the southwest side of that ridge, and these pictures are taken from the east side.
So far, but we also have pictures over on the other side, which are ones that are disturbing.
From the perspective we've been looking at in these first three images, the tower is on the backside of the hill from this point of view.
Less likelihood that those trees would, yeah, right, exactly.
Too bad it can't be on the backside of the hill from, uh, three hundred and sixty degrees around, but that's sort of geometrically impossible.
Right.
The, 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 the way, uh, radio signals, high-frequency radio signals work, you kind of have to be able to see line of sight, all that kind of the basic, more or less, line of sight.
Let's move on.
All right, so here again, you can, yeah, this is slightly more visible. You can see the gap between the balloon and the tower.
But again, you're looking past a, a lattice, uh, high-tension wire tower and, and, and a, a power line in order to even see that tower.
Yep.
And you have the benefit of when these are taken in the winter. So it's, it's complete leaf-off conditions here. This is the worst that you'll see.
Now we're in Sutton.
This is the Sutton side.
You, you gotta admit, even with the reduced tower height, the tower really sticks out.
You can see it in Sutton, yeah.
But the pictures that, uh, there was a picture in the, in the study, which more or less matched the picture I took, that shows, it shows, uh, a more dominant, um, look than this one. This one's from further back or it's wider angle.
There's six or seven views from Sutton, so I think we can.
Okay, well, we'll get to it then.
Yeah, I mean, even here, you can see with.
That looks substantially more than a fifteen-foot difference.
Yes. That's, that can't be even close to right. Cause the, uh, elements, the antenna elements are out to all ten feet.
Six to eight feet.
Uh, six to eight feet.
Like four to six.
There's a whole lot more than.
That's four to six feet.
Two, uh, element heights.
All right, four to six feet. But the balloon is, uh, what, five feet in diameter?
Yeah, um, there's something, something not quite right there.
Let's go through the next one.
Not even close. Same, the same point.
This is all Sutton.
These are all Sutton, yeah.
Yep.
And these are... Oh, this is not in the Sutton neighborhood anymore.
This is... Yeah, this is also in Sutton, but it's not part, this is farther away from that.
Not in the same neighborhood.
Condo development. And now we're back in Grafton. Yeah, where the balloon is here and the, now the tower is just barely peeking up above the trees.
Yep. Those are the only ones that were visible.
Does any member of the board or Mr. Maxon want to discuss anything further? Natalia, you're not on mute. But, yeah, remember the board wanted to discuss anything further tonight or draw open to the public? I'm seeing none on the board.
I have nothing else at the moment.
There's a lot to unpack here.
Yes.
Um, let's just start out with, they've asked to reduce it fifteen feet.
I know you've, you've been up many times, thank you for coming.
Oh, uh, Adam Ray, forty-two filet.
Thank you.
Um, but without permission, they can add twenty onto it, so you're right back to one seventy-five. And I would assume they're gonna add twenty onto it immediately. Three arrays of six-foot cans, twenty-four in total, or twelve, you know, whatever. So they're gonna, this thing's gonna be about a hundred and seventy-five feet. These pictures, I don't think represent it. These pictures, you can get an idea with the balloons, which I've put online, put it as an exhibit, the height of these, this tower, or the potential thirty-five millimeter camera. Um, as far as the hill, the ridge, um, I think it speaks for itself. And, well, I'll just read my, my letter and we'll go from there. Um, in Verizon's statement in support of their application, they claim, claim a substantial coverage gap in the town of Grafton in four main targeted areas. I would like the board to question this assertion as absolute fact. I have documented examples of quality Verizon mobile service with no interruptions or dropped calls in all targeted areas. I believe there is no significant gap. Therefore, denial of the special permit does not have an effect of prohibiting personal wireless service in the town of Grafton. Whatever slight improvement, if needed, cannot justify the size and the scope of this project. Such minimum improvements could be attained by an expanded site location effort in regard to the photo simulation analysis of the tower. It was inaccurate and therefore misleading. We are left to our imaginations to envision a hundred and seventy-five-foot tower with multiple large antenna attached. Verizon has not sought to minimize the visual effects on our town scenic landscapes. They claim the wooded site is large and will naturally shield the tower, but Lazy Hill being a ridge line is unique and negates this effect. It is simply not possible to minimize the blighting of our neighborhood with this proposed location and tower height. I believe there is substantial evidence that Verizon's proposal seriously fails to conform with our town's bylaws. And, uh, my test was pretty simple. I stayed home and my wife drove to every area, down one twenty-two, to the center of Milbury, to the center of Grafton, down Milbury Street, Fitzpatrick, down one twenty-two to Northbridge, back to one twenty-two A, and then back to KPs. The total time was thirty-two minutes with no dropped calls and no interruption in service. This included Milbury Street Elementary School and South Grafton Elementary School. And then we just did another one, which, uh, did a couple of their other little locations. Um, I think it was a Heartness Drive, which is right over by KPs, that's like three hundred feet long. Um, and, um, uh, just down, uh, Fitzpatrick again, back to the school and back again, which I've highlighted and put that down too. So I have this, I've sent it to the town. Um, what else do we have? I just, I can't say that you can look at this photo simulation on this computer screen and see what this is gonna be like. But this is the largest tower that I can imagine that you could even find, even in an industrial park. You can't find a one seventy-five-foot tower. The only one I've got close that I've found is the one in, um, Amazon parking lot at two ninety and one ninety, the junction. They have a big one there that you could go look at. But when you look at, at the back of my property and you look how steep Lazy Hill is in the winter, you can see the ground at the top of the, the hill. You can see the ground, the trees in front of it don't do you any good. You can, you can see right through them to the ground. So when they take the trees around that site down, you're gonna see this tower at a hundred and seventy-five feet with twenty cans on it. I don't care what they, that this thing says, go find one and look at it. And I think this tower in this location is just, it's just wrong. So that's all I've got to say about that. Um, and if there was any screening on Grafton's side, it'd be coming from me and my trees. What if those were taken down? They don't have any control over that, but that doesn't really matter because you can see right through it. So that's just another little thing. Did I miss anything on?
No, I just wanted to see, it was, we do Verizon service, it was inaccurate, we've never had Grafton.
So.
In any of the locations that we've.
I have a, uh, uh, I'd like to question why they think there's substantial gaps and people can't get coverage when you can drive around and, and not lose calls through the targeted areas. So I'd like them to, you know, or the town to at least question that. Um, and I think, you know, it goes back to our bylaws and I'm not gonna go through those again. I've already done it three times for you guys, I think you know them. So, um, I'd just like to, to end on that and we'll see what the next meeting brings. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for sticking with us so long.
Just a second, I, I think that some of the material that he just spoke of is, is material that I've been going around with the office about not being able to see on the website, which is where I have to look at it. There's, um, you know, computer issues, access.
This one in particular is exhibit forty-six, and I believe.
Yes, now go into exhibit forty-six and click the link, and then click the link to the picture, and tell me if you get to the picture.
The, the pictures I have on exhibit forty-six are the two that are right below the first page, those three pages on that.
I understand that, click on those links and see if they work.
Can I see the pictures?
Yeah, they, they don't work the links, but the pictures that they're linking to are the ones that are on our PDF.
Are on what?
The, the PDF of exhibit forty-six.
Yeah, don't use the links, the picture just shows up.
I don't know what was just said.
If you just scroll, if you click on the, the exit, exhibit forty-six and then just scroll down from the first page, the pictures just show up. If you click on the link at the bottom of the first page, it doesn't link to anything, but if you just scroll, you'll get two pictures.
Yes, ide- ideally on that first image, those, those links would not look like they're, they would not be clickable because.
Actually.
Part of Bob's point is that they are clickable, and when you click on them, you don't get anything. And that is at least a little bit confusing for people viewing this.
And I think the IT committee should talk to the appropriate people about that.
Who do you know on the IT committee, Bob?
Who do you know, Dave?
Let me reel this back in, you two.
We don't need to go off the deep end on that, but.
All right, so. Yep, as Leonard just said, it's getting late, where do we need to go from here?
We, we don't have really anything more to tell you, I don't think. Um, we've completely addressed the coverage issues and Mr. Maxon has reviewed them on your behalf. Um, the photo sims speak for themselves from the Grafton side. Um, and I'll, I'll check with the, the analyst who did those about the ones from the Sutton side. I see what you mean on those, um, but, but again, that's, you know, anyway, it's gonna be visible in Sutton, we, we know that. There's not much we can do about that.
If I'm hearing that there may be a revision to those photo sim because of the Sutton site, do we want to hold the hearing open so we can receive the documentation on that?
We, yeah, there was also the question about trying to, trying to understand exactly what the Sutton planning board's expectations were when they approved this. In, in particular, did they clearly understand that a cell tower might go here?
When they, when they approved the revision that took this piece out.
Yep, yes, yep, so, yeah, I think, and that, that is information that I think would be relevant to our decision. I think it would be appropriate for, for us to want to keep the hearing open so that we can receive that.
Yep.
Could I just ask one question?
There's, there's.
Why would that be?
I don't know whether we're gonna get more information about it, but there's also was sort of a hint of the idea that we should be protecting Grafton and somebody else should be protecting Sutton. Um, but the tower is in Grafton, and that's where the permit comes from. And there's no, um, how, how does, how does Sutton get protected uh, from a tower that's built right next to their border on the next town over? Um, that's, anybody have any idea what I just said?
I, I think that's why that you, um, we, we notify all the butters depend, regardless of what town they live in, and we also, um, notify other planning boards and other boards. So every time something happens in Sutton, we, the planning department and the planning board gets notice of it.
Yep.
Um, in order to, if they have an issue, um, they should, they should come. And my understanding is the planner at the time when Sutton. Did actually take this parcel out, there, the planner from Grafton was there. Um, so there, there, I'm not sure if he was heard, uh, but he was definitely there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that he was. I remember that it was a touchy situation. But, but I'm, I'm not saying none of them came to complain to us. Um, I'm saying. We have a job to look at it, to look at the photo sims and whatnot and make our own evaluation. No one in Sutton. Has that discretion, even though the impact is in Sutton. So I think we have a responsibility. Uh, our law says, has. Considering when it was written, it has pretty good words in it about what we're trying to accomplish. And I think it's relevant no matter which direction you're looking from and. What, what town you're in. It's the same values. Okay, well.
One second, go ahead, Adam.
I was just asking why you said it was important about whether they took it out for our cell tower or not.
I, I mentioned it because it did come up in our discussion as potentially relevant information. Information that we may. Once we know that, we will decide whether we give that any weight. That's another question.
Well, this is the Sutton Planning Board and Department, August sixteenth, twenty eighteen. The application requested the reduction in the amount of open land required for the development by one point, one eight acres. To allow for the constructions of a telecommunications tower and access road.
I know we did a bunch of plans, I know.
They did, they did approve it knowing there was gonna be a cell.
So, and I, and the, the, our planning guys were there too. I was at those meetings. And uh, they have, um, you can look up their records and their comments on it. Find them quite interesting.
So we've answered that question.
And it, just one thing, I, I don't know how highly unusual it is for another town to take out open space. And another town to put up a cell tower for the purpose of their town. Seems a little odd.
To actually, uh, encumbered land in a different town for a subdivision in that town.
And if you look at the minutes, you'll see their consternation.
Can I just give you these photos too? They're the ones online, but you know, online, you can't really blow them up and stuff like that. If you want to just put them in your record.
I, I wonder what the tallest tower that is in Sutton. In a residential sort of area is. Um, because when, when in Sutton, I read that, I think about my experience with cell towers. Um, and I could easily not think that that was gonna be a big deal. So let, let it be. It's getting late.
I, I also wanna just make clear, it's, this is a hundred and fifty-five foot tower. I know we've, there have been a lot of heights mentioned tonight, just to make sure.
The proposal says.
Proposal is one fifty-five now, yes.
And, you know, as probably mentioned, there is, you know, federal law that allows, you know, exceptions for certain reasons and, you know, without having to come back to us as well.
One antenna array, it's probably about ten feet.
But, yes.
It's up to twenty feet, but it's typically, it's typically a ten foot extension.
Yeah, well.
That's only if someone needs that, that site. I don't, you know. That's not necessarily, uh, whether it's gonna happen or not.
So anyway, it sounds like we're looking to continue the hearing, just to have it open. At the very least, to have at least one member, you know, be able to mullen in, to be able to have the, you know, adjusted photo sims. If you guys, you know, discover that something is wrong with those and the Sutton side to submit to us. And, you know, for us to then.
Is this, is this gonna work? Linda's not gonna be at the next meeting. And then she only has one more meeting after that. And has Crayboom missed more than one? So mullen only works once, if I recall correctly. For each hearing. A what? No, for each session of the hearing? No. This is a hearing. All of these together is a hearing. So he won't be able to mullen in if I'm, if I'm understanding that.
I believe there's, there's three more meetings. So April tenth is the meeting that. Ms. Hager will not be there. Then there's the twenty-fourth and then May eighth.
Are you sure about the eighth? Cause we have town meeting.
We have May first, not May eighth.
Okay, then May first. But the, the, we checked with the town clerk today. Um, the, uh, after, May sixteenth, when the, when the, when the election is held. Or whatever that day is. So that'll leave three additional meetings. I'm sorry, two additional meetings, uh, not including the tenth, which you won't be at. The twenty-first and the first, twenty-fourth and the first.
Linda's not gonna be, the, our next meeting is the tenth. Linda's not gonna be there. Then we have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. Hopefully can be there. But then. The next planning board meeting is the seventh.
The first.
So not gonna be able to meet on town meeting.
The next planning board meeting is May first after April twenty-fourth.
May, uh, I, I have the May twenty-second. Whoops, May?
May one.
May first. I don't have that on my, on my, okay. Anyway, it, it's gonna be a tight, um, a tight thing. Is, is, is our, um, alternate, um, our associate. Going to be eligible, um, on mullen or, or without mullen?
She has to mullen. She missed one meeting, so she will have to mullen, but she's here tonight.
But she can, so far.
She can, right. But she's here tonight, so she's only missed one. The other member who would have had to mullen has now missed two, so that makes him ineligible. You can't mullen for two.
Right, that's, I think that's what I.
And you only need four, but I think the applicant would like to have five members voting to get four.
Right, well, yeah, and, and we, we don't have anything more that we need to submit. I mean, we can submit revised photos if you want, but I can also stipulate that those. Uh, those towers should be, you know, basically three tower, three antenna arrays below the balloon. So if they were misadjusted on the Sutton side, they're a little bit off. Um, I, our position is that the view from the Sutton side really shouldn't be material to your decision in Grafton. Um, there's no, there's no, uh, I, I know some people disagree with that. But there's no, uh, rural view from that neighborhood. It's not, uh, it's not part of the town of Grafton and there's nobody from that neighborhood showing up to complain. There's not been no. Commentary from the planning board complaining. And as Mr. Ray pointed out, the planning board knew there was gonna be a tower. Proposed, so I, I, I really think that's a red herring. Um, there was also a comment at one of the earlier meetings that they didn't, somebody didn't care about coverage in Sutton. So you can't not care about coverage in Sutton, but care about the view in Sutton.
Is that the same person who said both of those?
Might have been. The, uh, the, the only other thing I wanted to mention was, and Mr. Maxson mentioned this at the first hearing. He suggested a waiver of the five-foot panel antenna size. Um, and so we would formally request that waiver if we didn't do it at that time. I forget if we did it.
I don't remember seeing the waiver, but I could be wrong.
But that's, um, you know, that's a provision nearby that I, I think David suggested was a little outdated. Um, the plans we filed do show one, one of the antennas on each of the arrays. On each of the sides would be seventy-two inches, which is six feet. The other ones are considerably shorter.
So if for no other reason than to include mullen certifications in the record. We need to keep the hearing open. And. Sounds like we're kind of aiming at maybe April twenty-fourth so that everybody can be here. Between now and then, we might want to begin thinking about. What our decision is gonna look like.
Well, and then, and between now and then means now, because you can't, without Ms. Hager's. Uh, it would be hard to do that without her next time.
So.
The possibility is she may not be available on the twenty-fourth?
I don't know that. I can't answer it because I can't tell you what's going to happen on the tenth. I'd rather not get into that.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry about that.
I'm hoping I'm going to be here.
It starts earlier in the day. No one knows.
The problem is I'll be under anesthesia and even if I could zoom in on the tenth, I couldn't vote on anything. You, you are not allowed to. I mean, I, I will have the effects of anesthesia and you can't, you cannot make legal decisions.
We're talking about. The twenty-seventh?
No, we're talking about the tenth. I mean, in theory, I could probably zoom in that night, but I don't think we'd be productive.
So it's sounding like the board wants to have staff draft a decision, try to get some. Some of the questions we might need legal counsel just to kinda know about, you know, involve just to get that draft going. In time for our, whenever bringing the hearing back up again, whether that be, you know, twenty-fourth or. Tenth, I don't know what we, we'll end up doing on that point, but to having a draft decision. Ready for us to discuss and start deliberation on. I don't imagine we're going to come to a decision on the same night we first look at that draft as a board.
Do you have, do, is there, are you saying to write the draft with both ways? Or does the board have a, is the board tonight willing to direct the planner to? Write it one way or the other?
I think you better write them both ways.
Yeah, I, I think the idea of. A denial would eliminate a lot of the, you know, potential conditions. It would eliminate, you know, some of the waiver warning. So being able to draft the conditions, the conditions as if we might be approving. But still have the, you know, openness that we can, you know, decide to deny. That's kinda how I'm thinking about it because there's, there's more involved in the approval for conditions than it is in the denial. But that, we kinda need it both ways, in my mind. You know, I don't wanna completely end tonight without just recognizing I did see your hand earlier. Is it something we have not talked about yet or is it something?
Well, if they're not gonna, um, do an enhanced photo simulation, then I guess there's no point. I was just wondering why the.
Why is that not, why is it just a pole?
So why is it just like a little stick that's hard to see in the woods? Without all the antenna attached, can't, if you, if they've got the capabilities, why don't they just put all the cans there and show people what it's gonna look like? I just, I just will cut to the chase. There's no way you put a hundred and seventy-five foot tower on top of Lazy Hill. And it's not gonna have no visual impact on the side of Grafton. This, that is not possible. So I'll lend it at that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The cell towers I've been here for on proposals, you know, that's all I can speak to is that. The applicant that's putting antennas on it will typically only show their antennas on the photo sim. Because, you know, the potential for other, you know, organizations to add antennas to the tower, you know, that does exist. But there's no way of knowing what those might, you know, look at. That's, that's just been my experience so far. That doesn't mean it's.
So I didn't look at the simulation, cause I can't just pick it up. But are all of Verizon's six-foot antenna in the three arrays on that simulation?
They're.
The three.
The ones that are on their plan that we've seen, you know, that, that we've seen as a board is on their photo sim.
It is. Thank you.
They, they've said that the photo sim represents what they're. It's usually twelve antennas arranged in a triangle around the pole. I'm not sure here, but I think that's what we have.
That's right. That, that's right, Mr. Hesenger. That's, that's what it shows.
Yep, and that, that's the way it, that's the way the cell systems work these days, or have always actually. And it takes a certain number of feet along to have four in a row. So that tells you sort of how wide the whole thing spreads. Anyway, are we up to a, a, a request and a, and a motion to, um, continue?
We, we can request a continue until the twenty-fourth. Is that what you're preferring?
That's what I think. The safest, the best, that's what I think.
Yeah, I mean, a, a, again, we don't, from, from the applicant's standpoint, we just as soon have you close the hearing and continue your deliberations on the twenty-fourth. But if there's more information you need internally or the, or if you wanna keep them open for the mullen, then we're happy to, to oblige requesting that.
That's basically the, you know, the approach we've taken earlier tonight was. The mullen needs to be on the re, on the record of, of information received. Once the hearing is closed, you can't receive any more information for the record.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I'm not sure the mullen really does, but I also don't know that it doesn't. So I guess this is the, this is the conservative way to do it.
In the past, we've, we've always kept the hearing open for that. Not that, you know, we're not lawyers, so.
It's not, because it's not actually evidence. It's just, it's just a, a certification from the member that they've, that they've been there. They have to have that on before they vote. That's what the statute says. But if you're more comfortable, we're happy to request until the twenty-fourth.
I think I can remember times when.
I, I didn't hear what.
On the record after the hearing has been closed.
I, I didn't hear what you've said, but. This means that you, you're never gonna be able to mullen the last session of a hearing.
That's true too.
That's true.
You can't watch the video and sign the paper until after the meeting ends.
Yeah, in, in many cases, the, the planning boards keep the public hearing open until they are ready to do the deliberation. To be able to even ask questions of the applicant at that time as well, because you can't get any information. But it does make it a little bit difficult, yes.
If you're not here the last meeting, you can't mullen for the, for the last meeting and vote on the decision at the last meeting.
No, but you could, you, you could, while the hearing remains open, well, at the last session of the hearing. If you, if you deliberate and vote on the decision at that time, then anyone who misses that hearing is just not part of the decision.
I, I think perhaps we should get a definitive answer to this question in case it comes up again.
For, for the next time, yes.
Time, for the next meetings, but right now, we've been keeping the public hearing open in order to get the mullen certificate. And if that's what the board wants to do for consistency, you might as well do it here as well.
Anyway, I heard the applicant verbally request a continuation till the twenty-fourth of April.
I move that we grant the applicants to, to be submitted written request. For a continuation to April twenty.
Twenty-fourth.
Fourth at seven thirty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the applicant's written request to continue the hearing till the twenty-fourth. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hesenger.
Aye.
Ms. Hesenger.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I declare the motion carried unanimously of those present. And we will take this up again on the twenty-fourth.
Staff will work on drafting a decision.
Yes.
With all the complexities and potentially involved in not knowing whether the board will ultimately decide to approve or disapprove.
Now then, so, someone should look and see my calendar says a planning board slash select board meeting on the first of May. I think that's ancient, but.
Probably ancient. I don't remember that, but either way, we can touch base after. Off the meeting. All right.
All right.
Now.
Are we done with telecom so that the stenographer can stop?
We are. Any other items which may lawfully come before the board tonight?
How about a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. Staff can figure out who did which. No discussion, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Hassenger?
Aye.
Ms. Hassenger?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Favor's adjourned.